Good morning, everybody. Welcome to this April 3 meeting of the Charlotte City Council Transportation Planning and Development Committee. Let's start as usual with our introductions commencing in the far corner. Ms.?
I'm sorry. Alexandria Sanz-Axios. Sarah Hazel, Chief Sustainability and Resilience Officer.
Jason Schneider, Communications.
Morning, Billiski, Charlotte East.
Geraldine Gardner, Executive Director of the Centralina Regional Council.
Marcus Jones, City Manager.
Good morning, Renee Johnson, Committee Member, District 4.
Matt O'Grady, Committee Member, District 2.
Editorates, Committee Chair.
Good morning, everyone. James Mitchell, Committee Member at Large.
Liz Babsen, Assistant City Manager.
Yolanda Jones, Planning Department.
Allison Craig, Planning.
Lynn Alexander, Charlotte Transportation.
David Hawes, WBPA.
Steve Harrison, WFAE.
Katherine Mahoney, Planning.
Andrew Kane, Charlotte Transportation.
Kevin May, Planning staff.
Thank you. We have quite a big agenda today, and I think we could end up being pressed for time, so I hope you'll all bear with me if I... Sorry, did we miss people online? Excuse me, go ahead.
Good morning, Dante Anderson, Vice Chair, District 1.
Wouldn't want to miss you.
Good morning, Brent Cagle, Interim CEO, CATS.
Others online?
Renee Askew, Assistant City Manager.
We're good? All right. So, as I was saying, we have a big agenda today, and bear with me if I need to hurry us along at times just in order to make sure that we cover all of these important topics. The first item is a mobility update, and for that, I'm going to turn it over to Marcus Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Today, we want to talk a little bit with you about mobility. A few questions have popped up over the past several weeks, and we thought it would be good to have Geraldine Gardner here from Centralina and to talk just a little bit about where we are up to this point. So, last summer, the council passed the Strategic Mobility Plan. So, we put a, I guess, a slide that has a series of plans that have been implemented or adopted by council. That Strategic Mobility Plan really provided us with an opportunity to do something different than what we have done in the past. We came back to you in November and in January. I call it the Ed McKinney Show, and we talked a bit about projects that we had that aren't necessarily just transit-related. And when I talk about transit-related specifically, we're talking about trains and buses and maybe mobility hubs that come with those trains and buses. Today, we want to talk a bit about a more broader discussion that goes outside of Mecklenburg County that's been going on for a long time, and that's why we have Geraldine here. So, as we start to talk about the Strategic Mobility Plan and we talk about streets, sidewalks, greenways, bike paths, what have you, that's been really more or less Charlotte-centric. But there's, that goes beyond Charlotte. There's the transit plan that CATS has put together, as well as NC DOT's investments, and connect beyond what I would consider it to be is the Big R Regional Plan. So, what does that mean by that? I'll introduce a new concept today, Big R Regional and Little R Regional. When we think about Big R Regional, it is going well beyond the boundaries of Mecklenburg County, and Geraldine has done an incredible job of pulling folks together, and she'll talk with you about that today. When I talk about Little R Regional, which I'll talk about after Geraldine shares some information, it's really within Mecklenburg County. So, it is the city, it's the county, the six towns, and there's been a lot of work in both of those areas. So, with that being said, I'd like to, Mr. Chair, turn it over to Geraldine.
Great, thank you, Mr. Manager. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the City Council. Thank you so much for having me here this morning to share a bit more about our work as a Big R region on Connect Beyond. We'll go to the next slide. Next slide. Thank you. So, this is an image that you see here of the Connect Beyond Regional Mobility Planning area. It's two states, 12 counties, 2.5 million people. So, we do have a vision for the region. The vision is to improve transportation choices and connections across this area, both in the short term and the long term. We've been at this work for a very long time. The origin story of Connect Beyond dates back to when the region first came together in a process called Connect Our Future to shape a vision for how we grow as a region and remain economically competitive. And we knew at that point in 2016 and '17 that we had to come together as a region and improve how people get to and from work, to and from the job centers and destinations across our region, and connect our urban, suburban, and rural communities. So, that was really the birth of the need to do a regional mobility plan and Connect Beyond. Over two years, from 2019 to when the plan was adopted in 2021, we came together. The City of Charlotte has been a partner from the inception of the planning process, both as a funder and as a partner in the decision-making and the whole planning process. But CATS and the MTC, the Metropolitan Transit Commission, was the sponsor, co-sponsor along with Centralina of this planning effort. And as you'll see in a few slides, the CATS 2030 Plan really becomes the DNA or the foundation of Connect Beyond. Next slide. Over the course of that 24-month planning process, we arrived at what we call Five Mobility Moves. These are the core goals of the plan. It includes everything from how we expand our transit network, but it also thinks about how we are improving the transit experience and the mobility experience for people today. Because as we work on these long-term, complex, billion-dollar projects, we also have to think about how do we encourage people to have faith in the transit system and improve their mobility choices today? And that includes thinking about how do the different, the 17 different transit agencies that are in this planning area connect, both in terms of schedules and fares and lines and routes, but also how we are thinking about supporting our local governments and our communities in building mobility-friendly places? So, thinking about transportation and land use decision-making, the very subject of this committee's work here in Charlotte. So, the multi-dimensional aspect of the plan both allows us to think in short and long-term ways, and as you can see here, there are over 120 specific recommendations that we need to move the needle on over the course of this planning process or the course of the implementation. So, Connect Beyond is not just a plan, it's not just a document that's going to sit on the shelf. It is an action plan for how we come together as a region to make strides and improve mobility. Next slide. So, even though we had big ideas about the improving the systems and improving how our places are ready for mobility, we also looked at how we could expand the physical network of the mobility system. So, you can see here, this is a sort of a drill down into the Connect Beyond system network for the CRTPO planning area, that's the black boundary, as well as Mecklenburg County. So, you can see that the colored lines are the CATS 2030 System Plan, so we're really building out on that plan and thinking about how to extend those lines into our surrounding jurisdictions. One of the things that we did in the Connect Beyond process was to remain very much focused on building on local plans. So, Connect Beyond not only takes the 2030 Plan, but also takes plans that were done in other parts of the region and knits them together in a cohesive regional vision and action plan. So, our extent, the extension of these lines, as you can see in the green, various shades of green, what that is really saying to us as a region, not in this particular line, it is light rail or streetcar or rapid, bus rapid transit. We use the term high-capacity transit. That gives us incredible flexibility as this plan evolves over time to mean potentially commuter rail. It could mean an autonomous shuttle at some point in the future that goes to a community, picks up riders, and brings them to an employment destination. So, the plan has inherent flexibility, but it still maps out an important vision for the future. Next slide. After the plan was adopted by both the Centralina Regional Council and the MTC and our various metropolitan planning organizations and rural planning organizations in the fall of 2021, we immediately pivoted to implementation. When I joined Centralina in 2019, my first week on the job, my planning director said, "We're doing a regional mobility plan." And as a planner, it was very exciting to me to start a job at a regional organization knowing that we had this big work ahead of us. But what I said at the time, and what I said, you know, continued to say throughout the planning process and now, is that we can't just do this plan without the intention of implementing it. So, this planning for implementation has been at the forefront of our work since the inception of the process. And how we maintain our momentum moving forward is, one, by demonstrating meaningful progress now, not just thinking about the, you know, incredibly long-term, complex elements of the plan, but thinking about how are we working with our transit agencies and planning organizations today to make meaningful improvements for the individual riders and communities that are covered in this plan? The second is to leverage the incredible amount of federal funding opportunities that are coming our way. By having this regional vision, we make ourselves more competitive for these federal funds. The administration has clearly signaled that they like to see that a region has a vision for where it wants to go and that we support individual communities pursuing their path to receiving funds to implement those improvements locally that are in the spirit of the regional vision, and I think that's a really important point here in the City of Charlotte. We also have to address some of the sticky challenges that we still have with our existing systems. We have an incredibly complex landscape of stakeholders in our region, much more complex than a lot of the major metropolitan regions that we compete against, that might have one regional transit provider, one metropolitan planning organization for transportation planning decisions. So, we have to lean into the complexity and make sure that we're building durable relationships across the region to ensure that we're talking to each other and that we're planning and implementing together. We're also facing some misconceptions about the plan. There's a concept that it's only about transit, but we're talking about mobility. The manager talked about the mobility vision here in, locally in Charlotte, being multimodal. We take the same perspective in Connect Beyond. It's about bikes and pedestrians, it's about shared transportation services like our car, ride share and bike share and scooter share. It's also about commuter rail and transits. We have to think holistically. There's also misconception that it's only about our urban centers, but one of the four goals in Connect Beyond is to connect our urban and rural communities, and that's a very important concept to thinking and acting regionally. And then, lastly, that it's only a plan, that we're not really doing anything for implementation. Next slide. So, a few things that we're doing to demonstrate meaningful progress. We have many different transit providers in our region, CATS obviously being the largest, but we're starting a program to continue the good coordination across our transit agencies through the planning process to think about how do, across these different transit agencies, one of the things that we did through Connect Beyond was we talked to riders across the region, and you had case studies and stories of individuals who lived in Kannapolis that had to take transit to get to a medical appointment in Huntersville. It took them hours to make that ride because fares were not coordinated and schedules were not coordinated. So, this is the work that we're hoping to do and are working on now in addition to improving those first and last mile connections, meaning how do you get from a bus stop to the destination that you're getting to? Next slide. The other thing that we're doing is talking as a region about how we continue to coordinate on some of the longer-term, bigger-picture, complex issues. So, that includes governance, and it includes funding. So, as we talk across and with our different transit agencies and MPOs and RPOs on our side of the Connect Beyond planning region border in North Carolina, we needed a forum to engage in these conversations and to think critically, almost like a think tank, if you will, for what this means and how this all works together. So, our role as an organization is to be a neutral platform for regional dialogue. That is why we exist. So, our board, this past fall, set up a subcommittee called the Advancing the Plan Committee. We invited elected officials, managers, and members of the business community to come together in a series of meetings to help us as staff think through these different angles to advancing the work of this plan. So, you can see the committee goals here on the screen. One, really, that first goal is about governance and collaboration, both in the short term and the long term. What are the different models for regional governance that exist across the country that might make for an interesting conversation starter here in our region as we think about how to institutionalize regional collaboration? The second goal is around regional communications for Connect Beyond. We know if we speak with one voice as a region, that we have a plan, that we're working together, we will be more successful with, locally, and also with our state and federal partners. And then, the final goal is related to those partners and stakeholders in Raleigh and Washington. How can we, as a region, help to support local initiatives? As you all go seek support amongst your delegation for funding initiatives here in the City of Charlotte, we want to be right with you as a region supporting you and saying, "Your work here in Charlotte implements the region, regional plan in Connect Beyond." The next slide shows you a list of our committee members. We have robust participation from across Mecklenburg County and the City of Charlotte. Mayor Lyles is the co-chair. The MTC had elected two representatives, Mayor Barrows and Mayor Knox, and we also have Commissioner Altman on the committee as well. So, I think my final slide is just another point of emphasis that when you are successful of, as the City of Charlotte, we are successful as a region, and we want to be able to support the work that you're doing to continue to implement the Strategic Mobility Plan because we feel that that is really advancing our Connect Beyond vision as well. And with that, I'll turn it back to the manager.
Thank you, Geraldine. I believe over the course of the last two-plus years, we've had a number of conversations about this, and I think you've put it together better than I've ever heard. So, I'll try to build off of what Geraldine just said, and first of all, thank you for being such a great partner. And I want to get back to the small R for a second, the regional approach, that has really been within Mecklenburg County. So, the City of Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, as well as the six towns. And one thing that's been important with trying to come together within Mecklenburg County has been this issue of trust. If we go back in time, we, each time we have this discussion, we should put it out there, the northern towns fully expected with the half-cent sales tax that the red line would be built. It wasn't built, okay? And there are a bunch of complications with that. At some point before all of us were in these seats, maybe not you, before all of us were in these seats, there was a plan to have commuter rail in the northern part of Mecklenburg County. We even got to a 30% design, which basically means you're ready for the federal funding. And then Norfolk Southern basically said, "We don't want to have commuter rail, pasture rail mixed with freight." So, that really caused this problem where the northern towns really believed that there was something that was promised to them that wasn't delivered. So, I say that to say that in the small R, building back trust is very important, no matter what we do. I love the way that Geraldine set this up because what I wanted to do was go one level lower today and speak just about Charlotte, okay? But I didn't want to start with that because it would appear that there's no regionalism, no discussions going on. So, I really appreciate you not reading ahead. There are a couple of documents in front of you, and we'll start off with the identified mobility opportunities. You may recall back in the fall when Ed came to you at first and presented a number of, how can I say it, opportunities, we said that we would come back to you in the first quarter of 2023 with actual projects, and that's the takeaway for today, okay? So, instead of having you go through 2000, I think Liz is 2002, projects in this document, it's just good to know that the projects are identified by district. I will tell you this, and this is, I guess, the beginning of the discussion as we move forward. If we just started to fund certain projects by district, whether it's a sidewalk project here or a lighting project there, I'm not so sure it would be helpful with us trying to address some of our congestion problems across the city. So, what we're doing for the first time ever, thinking about this more broadly, and how can you have a combination of projects that could unleash additional capacity? Having said that, what you have also is the blueprint for mobility investment, and I'd ask you to just turn to pages 10 and 11 because what this basically shows is all of these projects based on categories, whether it's roads and complete streets, transit, pedestrian, micro-mobility. And what we've also done, and before I go any further, this has nothing to do with the sales tax increase, these are just the projects that we have identified, and there are some opportunities to combine these projects so that, again, we can create more capacity to move people and goods around in our community. The reason I brought up the sales tax, and I'm not going to bring it up anymore, is that right now, you do have capacity. In your CIP, you have three more bond cycles, okay? And this last bond cycle that was passed, I think that it was $226 million of capacity. As we talk about capacity, as we have talked about capacity, and we will continue even in the budget workshop this week, you have about $210 million of capacity in the 2024 bond, the 2026 bond, and the 2028 bond, okay? That's 210 each. I will tell you, there are only two streets and two intersections between now and 2028 that's already planned, okay? So, when you think about all of these projects that are in here, only two roads and two intersections are built into this. I'd also say to you, which I think is important, while the 2022 bond had $50 million for sidewalks, 2024, 2026, and 2028 combined only have $57 million for sidewalks. So, again, if you try to, I guess, force is too strong a word, but this is scalable, these projects, right? You could take some of the projects or the funding that's allocated in the out-year bonds and maybe replace them with this, or you think about a revenue source, whatever that is, to try to make sure that these projects are funded. I guess the last thing I would say is that, and I'll use District 7 because he's the chair, and so we'll go to the chairman. Each district, in the remaining pages, the key mobility projects in those districts are lifted up. So, if I went to page 24, the mobility opportunities in District 7, for instance, new street connections. Enhance the South Charlotte Street Network by extending Bryan Farms Road to Johnson Road. New street connections provide complete streets, multimodal facilities, and help mitigate congestion on the existing system. So, I would say that this is the comprehensive list. This is our first attempt of trying to collapse some of these together to unleash capacity, and I think we would have fulfilled the request from this fall to come back to you in the first quarter. The last slide that I would point you to is that on page nine, this is where we are right now, and then I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair. These are the strategic investment areas, and we're going to continue to have public engagement, we're going to continue to work on these, and ultimately, I would say, and you'll see this throughout here, there are cities that have put projects out there like Atlanta and Austin, and they have not done the necessary work to cost these out, and they've disappointed their residents because the costs weren't correctly analyzed. So, what I would suggest to you, as you look at step six, advanced planning, that has helped us even in this year's budget, where we're able to come back and say, "We believe some projects are potentially at risk, but we have some capacity to cover those." So, that is where we are, and the whole goal to date from my perspective is to go to that step three to make sure that we do have some projects, and we do have all the projects, but we also have a path forward as to how we can give the council more information. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Marcus, Mr. Manager. I warned you that we're time constrained, so we have now about eight or nine minutes for discussion of everything we just heard. I would like to invite committee members to speak and just be mindful of trying to give everybody a chance to say something because unfortunately, we're time constrained. We will follow up at future meetings to go into these things at greater depth. The idea was just to get this information out at a high level, so I will throw it open. By the way, I'd like to welcome Mayor Protem Winston. Good morning. Questions? Yes, sir.
Just a comment, and thank you for the presentation, and going Big R first, right? One of your sources maintaining our momentum, right? I don't feel it. I don't see it, right? And so, I just hope, and we don't talk about it enough, right? And so, and I'm sitting here, and I don't feel it, I don't see it, and I feel that somehow there's a perceived or unperceived disconnect, then there's a disconnect, right, in terms of really the region, the big region, talking with one voice, the folks in Raleigh understanding what our goals and objectives are and how we want to get there. And so, that's just my observation, understanding I'm well versed with Connect Beyond and what it is that we're trying to do, right? I just got to, we got to find a way to make people see, feel, and acknowledge the momentum that you talked about. I think that's just an observation.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, and then Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Geraldine, I think the question I have is the relationship between your organization and the MTC. Can you kind of explain, you all interact?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the question. So, we have a partnership for this work. Both Centralina and the MTC sponsored the Connect Beyond planning effort, and we remain in partnership through the implementation phase, but there's no formal structural relationship between the two organizations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to piggyback off Councilmember Graham's. First of all, thank you for the presentation, but you mentioned that the, the bill... But you mentioned that the building trust and the expectations of the northern towns previously, how are we nurturing that relationship, or how are we communicating consistently with those northern towns or their representatives to build that trust? What are the steps?
I think we'll tag team. So from the little r perspective, that's been the work that's been going on. So there have been conversations, at least between the managers, about how can we do something that's good for Mecklenburg County? And one of the things I think has been lost in the discussion is that there's been a lot of discussion around rail, but there are, and so again, when we say transit, we're really talking about the buses and rail. When we say transportation, we're talking about the projects that I'm giving you today. And so I think that's been part of it, is how can the different jurisdictions do what's important in their communities, as well as be a part of a broader coalition? And I don't know if Geraldine said this, I think she would agree, I hope, is that when somebody's positioned to go, whatever that means and however it means, as long as it's consistent with the overall plan, we should all be supportive.
I'll just add, with regard to all of our communities, we have regular updates on Connect Beyond at our board meetings. I think the Advancing the Plan Committee is, to do that hard, roll-up-your-sleeves work, you have to start building trust across that committee. And so I think it's been great to have Mayor Vales and Mayor Knox being a part of that conversation, both as leaders in their communities, but also as representatives of the MTC. So I think, you know, Councilmember Graham had a great point in terms of, part of our momentum is to really speak in a positive and collaborative way about what the promise of Connect Beyond is. And in order to do that, we need more elected officials to come together and talk together about the opportunities to collaborate on this plan and others moving forward. And you all do incredible work in your communities, you're very busy, so we're just trying to create those opportunities for folks to come together to build that trust, because we have a lot of hard work ahead of us if we're going to make progress on some of these longer-term issues.
Anybody else?
So I actually have several questions, but we are time constrained, so I'm going to cut myself off. I did want to say, for one, Ms. Gardner, the work you're doing is incredibly important. In fact, I think it's become increasingly apparent how important it is. You mentioned that it's sort of helpful, or however you described it, for the feds, they say it is essential. We have got to have a regional plan and demonstrate that we have partners and that everybody is on board. So really appreciate what you're doing, look forward to working with you. I've been in Raleigh a number of times, have talked to legislators. I think it's fair to say that there is a difference between their perception of what this plan should look like and ours, particularly as it involves rail. So maybe you could comment briefly on how we go about trying to close the gap between us and them, because the legislature at some point is going to have to approve the referendum that we will need for revenue in order to try to pursue these goals.
Councilmember, can you clarify when you say plan, which plan are you referring to?
Yes, I know. Well, the point is, it isn't one plan. It is that Connect Beyond doesn't work without Charlotte, Charlotte doesn't work without Connect Beyond, and none of it works without revenue, okay? So I'm regarding this holistically, and I'm recognizing in my conversations with legislators, again, this divergence. And I've tried with my own trips to Raleigh to start a better process of connecting and communicating and trying to achieve a convergence, I guess. But is this an issue that you've recognized, or have you been able to engage on that?
Yes, I mean, when we've gone to brief probably the same legislators, the comment I frequently get is, isn't your plan the City of Charlotte's plan? So I think there is a lot of confusion, that's one of the misconceptions that we have, and one of the reasons why our committee is so focused on, let's understand what those common communication framework points are, get those down on paper and start to use them. Because we can say very easily, let's speak with one voice, but what are the things we are speaking on? What are those points? And I think we really need to work swiftly to get to that, so that when you are all ready to move forward, that the region understands what are those talking points that are going to be most helpful to the work that you're trying to do moving forward. And similarly, when they, at some point in the future, might be ready to move forward with their own activities, have that same trust that the City of Charlotte is going to be right next to them saying, we support the work that they want to do moving forward.
I know from conversations with potential partners in neighboring counties even, that there is a hunger for something like this. There are local problems with transportation, and the region is economically consolidated, but not from a transportation standpoint. So I think it's really important work. The other thing, and the manager is going to gasp, you alluded to a referendum. I don't think it's fair to tease about the referendum without acknowledging the question as to when, or particularly, is it going to be this year? So right now, without a consensus having been established, I'll express the personal opinion that we're not ready yet this year. I think we owe the community a lot more in the way of description of exactly what's going to happen and when. We're going to have to sell this. And we know from other sales tax referendums that they can fail and do. So I believe, and I don't think there's a lot of disagreement now, that to try to get this done this year would be overly ambitious. I mean, there's an urge to do it because the federal money does depend on demonstrating a revenue source, so we would love to kind of get the authority for the sales tax, to be able to go and apply for the federal funds, but there's no point in going out with a referendum that doesn't succeed. So I think we can clarify, I believe I speak for most of us, that there will not be a referendum this year. The, I guess the last thing I'll mention is, there are big steps that I think you alluded to in terms of making more specific the investment, the cooperation, the governance of the region. I think we're going to need some sort of an authority. I think it needs to include all the stakeholders. How we go about that is what we're working on. But Mr. Graham was very right to point out that we have not had sort of headline announcements or news, and there is a perception that it's not moving. And all I can say about that is, this is hard work. So you start with a vision, and you think, this is the thing, this is what we need, and then you get into the conversations with all of the parties, and you realize that what they want, what they're prepared to invest, the terms of the governance, all of this does require, it's a mammoth undertaking. We are working on it, I think we are making progress, but the headlines aren't happening as fast as maybe some people would like. So unless there's something else from the committee, I really appreciate what you're doing. Thank you, look forward to working with you. Okay, our second agenda item is the CATS Oversight and Remediation Report, and you all received yesterday, and we can make available for media, a memo, which is basically trying to lay the groundwork for council action on some of the issues that have come to light. Mr. Kegel has COVID, and that's why he's up there on the screen and not here in the room with us. That's also why I'm going to sort of pinch-hit for him on talking about a lot of these issues, but Mr. Kegel is here to answer questions. I would like to note that Ms. Johnson, on the 13th of March, talked about the fact that council needs to take action, and I think we recognize that, appreciate that suggestion, so here we are. I'll just read the first paragraph from the memo. "In recent weeks, several operational and reporting failures have come to light at CATS that raise questions about the system's management and dependability. These failures are a particular concern, not only because they raise serious questions about CATS as a transportation utility, but also because they undermine public confidence in our light rail service. In response to the issues at CATS, the city manager issued a statement last week in advance of a media briefing hosted by him, CATS interim CEO Brent Kegel, and City Council Transportation Planning and Development Chair Ed Driggs, that's me. The memo, which is reprinted and full below, includes five strategic actions the manager proposes to take to get CATS on a stable course for the future." And Mr. Manager, I would like to invite you to summarize those for us.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. So basically, the five areas that I provided last week started off with asking the Federal Transit Agency to conduct an off-cycle review of CATS. Typically, there's a three, every three years, the FTA does a review of CATS. The last one was in 2022. Brent has had discussions with the regional administrator that there is an opportunity for the FTA to come back in and do a review of CATS. I think it's so important because, an off-cycle review, is because if you think about it, you have the FTA that has oversight over both NC DOT and CATS, and to come back in and do an expedited review with some key areas that were outlined in the memo to include the May 2022 incident, as well as the budget, as well as maintenance, and some issues related to that. The second item, and I think that's one of the reasons why I'm here today, is that I'm referring a, I have a referral, which Liz has, that she will hand out, to have the TAP Committee do a comprehensive overview of CATS, so that we can have this regular cadence of discussions at this committee. And then I'm recommending also that a work group be put together that would also be able to take a deeper dive into some of the operational issues that we've had surrounding CATS. Third point effective immediately is just that I'm suspending the search for the CATS CEO. Brent has done a great job, and one of the things that I think is important is that there needs to be a stabilization, if you will, with CATS. And if there are a bunch of new faces at the top level coming in and out, I think it's very difficult to build the culture that we want to build in CATS. Also, there are some opportunities to bring in from the outside, some expertise that'll allow us over the next six months in order to help stabilize CATS. And the other thing, the fourth point, which is extremely important, is that we have a number of individuals in CATS that are city employees, and we have a number of individuals across the 8,000-plus employees for the city that have a great level of expertise. And I'd like to highlight Chad Howell, who came in from Water, and in a very short period of time, on loan to CATS, as the interim CFO identified a number of budget issues that have provided us with this opportunity to move CATS forward. One of the issues that also popped up was asset management. I think many of you sat through the budget workshop where we had David Wolf talk about the new way that the city, based on a NASA model, looks at all of our assets, and we're going to take some resources from David's group and immediately place them over in CATS to help with that. And then lastly, I'm just reviewing the entire way that my office is structured in terms of oversight as it relates to our departments, specifically here at CATS, and I think that there's some lessons learned for me in terms of making sure that the communication channels are open, and that it's not, that it flows up through my office as well as to the council. So, Mr. Chair, those were the five elements of the memo that I sent out last week.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions from the committee or our guests on the manager's actions? If not, let's go to the memo. The point of our conversation, sorry, did I miss one? Excuse me.
I missed two.
Yeah, go ahead, can't see you back there.
That's okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I have some questions about these steps. In the March 13 meeting, I asked that this issue be referred to the TAP Committee so that we could have regular updates. So, you know, I want to say that, but I'd also like a copy of the NC DOT report to be sent to the committee.
Ms. Johnson, I have the, here.
Okay, all right, okay. And do we also have the memo, that our response, the corrective action plan, is that included?
Well, you can read in these, the exchanges that took place between NC DOT and CATS. So there may be other documents, and we certainly intend to get those and circulate them, but these are the ones I have now.
Well, as I've asked before, like a copy of the NC DOT, the letter of deficiency, that needs to be sent to the committee, and also a copy of the corrective action plan. And I think that we, at the committee level, should receive an update, at least monthly, on the status of the corrective action plan. I also want to talk about the culture of CATS. Someone in CATS would have known about this, would have known about the maintenance. So now whether or not it was communicated to the city manager's office, you know, that's a separate issue. But I'd like to talk about the culture with the employees. If there's an opportunity, like what's our whistleblower policy in the city? Because this, it's not just, and I've heard the mayor talk about it on WFA also, the culture. We want to change the culture. We want a culture in this city where employees, there is a level of transparency. So I don't know if that's something we can, well, it is something. We can talk to HR about a whistleblower policy, what is that? Because this culture of information not flowing to council, or not being transparent in your office, that has to change. And that's what our voters and our residents expect from us, not just in CATS, in the zoning process, and in all of the processes. So I think this uncovers an opportunity for us to improve the culture and build a level of trust. When there's trust internally, you know, that's going to help externally with our residents, with the northern counties. So this is an opportunity for us, on this council, to really shift the culture, and this really, really highlights that. So again, employees knew about this. There was possibly an employee that, you know, might have, you know, been terminated, or I don't, someone held accountable, but we need our employees to feel safe to bring these kind of issues to the forefront. So I would like to look, and this is broader than transportation, I'd like to look at the whistleblower policy in the City of Charlotte, to avoid these types of issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, Brent, get better, and we appreciate your leadership since December of this year. A couple of comments, no questions. And not speaking for the committee, but speaking for Malcolm Graham, the committee member, there's a whole lot going on within CATS right now. And I purposely asked that question to Brent on the 13th, what are his priorities, right? As he kind of assumes this new duties and responsibility, and his response was spot-on, making sure that we take care of the day-to-day operations of the organizations with all the various projects that we got on, the relocation of the transit center itself, the building of the temporary facilities, the day-to-day operation of the bus system itself, et cetera. And so I acknowledge that there's a lot of work that is being done, that has to be done, notwithstanding what we're talking about here today. So I'll put it that in the most important bucket. But the memo on CATS as related to the manager, I'm glad that there's some accountability for what's happening in CATS occurring. It doesn't rest with another organization or agency, it doesn't rest with Psalm not blowing the whistle, it rests within this building. And the accountability for operations, the accountability for transparency, the accountability for delivering on the promise to the citizens. And so I'm glad that the manager is here, I'm glad that he will be returning often, and I'm glad that he has outlined these various initiatives. Basic operations, employee safety, the public safety, public trust, accountability, all is on the line from my perspective. And we have to be transparent and responsive to all of that. I think the chairman is right, we can't ask for a tax, right? We can't run the basic system of the operations, right? And so I think we have to be realistic in terms of And so, I think we have to be realistic in terms of where we are. I think we have to exhale, right? And not overblow what has occurred, notwithstanding the fact that what has occurred is significant, right? I think we need to keep everything in perspective as we move forward, and so that we're sending the right message in terms of this council, this committee responses to what has occurred in a manner that it doesn't frighten and alarm, right? And notwithstanding the fact that there's a lot to be concerned about. There's no doubt about that. And so, I will be village agent, and I spoke at a Rotary Club, I told the manager this last week, on last Tuesday, and took public accountability, right? This happened on my watch, in terms of some of the deficiencies that has occurred within the organization, that we got to get right. And I believe that we have to write gentlemen and Brett helping us navigate this maze, keeping his eye on what is really important in terms of the day-to-day operation management of the organization moving forward, all the other projects that we have to do that are extremely important, how do we build regional support, which is extremely important, at the same time fixing what's broken. And I acknowledge that something is broken here, right? Something is broken that we have to put our finger on. One question that I know we're short on time. So, the federal transit audit, how is that different from an outside audit, right? Let's, help me understand, and would the MTC be satisfied that this is superior to it, or do we go in a dual track?
Okay, well, that's a tough one, I'll give it my best shot. So, let's start with the MTC, and I had the question earlier today. So, we will continue, Brent and his team, to provide information to the MTC based on their unanimous request for this outside audit, if you will. I will tell you that having the FTA in that is intimately involved with CATS and NC DOT, I think there's no learning curve there. This is something that they have suggested. I believe that we can put a number of items in that review that hopefully would satisfy this community, that a thorough examination has occurred. And so, I just wanted to be careful that I'm not suggesting that staff would stop fulfilling the requests of the MTC. I believe that this review would address many of the questions that came up at the MTC.
Okay, well, I think we want to, as fee and concert, as much as we can with them, it was unanimous vote, and even our mayor voted for it, right? And so, if this federal review is something that is a little bit superior, and they say, hey, we will kind of join the city to get on this bandwagon, I'm all for it, but if there's any disagreement from their perspective, that they still want an independent review, a majority of those members, then I think it's something that we got to do.
And I don't believe we are excluding that. I think the idea is that we do the work we're doing, and that we then take a look, talk to the MTC about whether they feel that we have been responsive, before we incur hundreds of thousands of dollars of expense. And, you know, frankly, I think all of us have had mixed experience with consultants and things, so just want to make sure that that is real value added and helps to build confidence before we commit to it.
Public confidence and public accountability.
Right.
At now, is on the table.
So, you know, there's a burden on us here to make absolutely clear that no whitewash is going on, right? And I think that's the shared sentiment that we have here. We will do what we have to do to prove that there isn't. I had Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to say that city manager, your points that you've highlighted, I think those are the right points to get us on the right path. Whenever we have a changing of the guard of leadership, you know, at the CEO level, the CFO and operations, it's a great time to introduce new standard operating procedures as it relates to how we communicate with one another, communicate out, and ensure that the organization is going through this process properly. And I consider this a get-fit process, where we are investigating our financials, investigating our asset management practices, and ensuring that we have the right foundation from a maintenance scheduling and infrastructure perspective, so we can then in turn embrace the innovation and the plans that we are working on when it's the right time to do so. So, I also agree that having Mr. Cagle continue the interim CEO role right now, and freezing the search is the right thing to do. We need to calm down the organization and get a set of practices in place so that we can build on it in the future. And Mr. Cagle's done a great job of bringing hard topics to the table and employing a level of transparency that I believe is new for us on council. And so, as we move forward, we need to set up the right cadence, to Ms. Johnson's point, as it relates to communication, both, not just simply one way, but back and forth, a two-length communication flow between council, CATS, and the rest of the entities that we serve on and help to build out our big, our regional plan. So, I believe this is the right, this is the right way forward. I believe we'll probably have additional bumps in the road, and as a leadership team, we need to be prepared for that and have the fortitude to bring those hard topics to a level of light, as Mr. Cagle has done in his first few months in the interim role. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you. And Mr. Winston, I'd remind you, sir, that we are under a lot of time pressure, so.
Yeah, I just got one thing, say, Mr. Graham's comments and question, actually to Mr. Jones, about whether the oversight, whether a consultant was needed or not, whether that would live up to what the MTC desired. To me, that's part of the problem, and I hope this work group that we get, that we put together, will work on bridging the gap between the city council and the MTC. I think that Mr. Graham even had to ask Mr. Jones that question illustrates where the issue lies. We on the city council get held responsible, rightly so, as I said, for a lot of the issues that happen with CATS, but we have this other board that is in charge of the policy. And those two boards, our two boards, have no official table to work at together. So, Mr. Jones does not necessarily answer to the MTC, so he doesn't have a real way of answering the question that Mr. Graham asked. City council doesn't have a presence on the MTC, and being that we don't have that table, I think that's inherently at the root of this problem. We have to look at that structure, and I hope this work group, that will be one of the primary topics, to look at and find a better solution for how we can work together, because this is a group that works once a month, we meet here once a month, we're dealing with that. There has to be some type of intersection of our work and pathways where we can work between those meetings as peers in some type of official way, and not just on the informal one-on-ones that we rely on right now, because obviously, it's not a sufficient way of running a transit system. I think that's at the core of the problems that we've been facing.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about that also. The MTC made specific recommendations with a unanimous vote. So, while I think the audit from the FTC or the FTA, right? What would that, what would this report from the FTA encompass?
So, I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I think Brent has been trying to chime in, and so, Brent, did you want to talk a little bit about the FTA review?
Yeah, so, I think that, so number one, the FTA would, what they've indicated is they would like to look at maintenance records, look at our state of good repair, the status of our state of good repair in the form of maintenance records, financial documents, those kinds of things, because we do have an obligation as a grant recipient to maintain the state of good repair across the fleet, across our system. So, those are some of the things that they've already indicated they would intend to look at. I think that as Mr. Jones indicated, we would want to talk to them about other things as well, probably specific to the May 21st issue, and any other staffing or safety-related issues that they deemed appropriate, but certainly they would, at a minimum, want to look at maintenance and financial records associated with CATS.
Okay. So, I would say that that sounds like a very technical audit, the MTC has spoken, we're not on that committee, this did happen on our watch. So, it happened on our watch, so I would, I would think that this is an opportunity for us to build trust with that MTC, the regional partners, and I say that we should follow the MTC recommendations and have the FTA review, because that is, I know that's a governing agency, and the oversight's important, so I don't see where one would necessarily exclude the other. So, that would be my recommendation, that we do both.
So, again, I think the situation right now is that we have not decided not to do what the MTC suggested, and I'd also like to mention, the Charlotte mayor chairs the MTC right now, and it is not my impression that there is a majority view that we are not dealing with this properly. So, I would like for us to take the actions that are contemplated in this memo and the things we've discussed, circle back with the MTC, tell us what we're doing, and if they feel that there is a need still, then we always can negotiate that with them. But the initial response that some of us at least have was that the manager's proposed course of action helps to right the ship, stabilize things, and is responsive to the concerns of the MTC, and we will find out whether we need to commit that expenditure in a follow-up briefing with them at their next meeting. So, I hope everybody's okay with that. I don't want to dive into the RFP right now, because we don't even know really what should be in it. Like, I think we need to be, understand the situation a little better in order to describe what action an investigator would take, or what sort of questions they need to answer for us. So, yes.
But the cost of the RFP, doesn't it fall under the manager's purview that he could...
Actually, that is a misnomer. The manager does not have the authority on his own signature to commit new money on behalf of the city. The signature authority he has, maybe, Mr. Marcus, would you like to comment on that?
Sure. Right, and so, and I guess this goes back to the Mayor Protem's comment earlier, and I'll choose my words carefully. I'm not so sure that there is structure around the MTC when it comes to a situation like what occurred a few weeks ago. And that is back to the management partners' report, and all of the different organizations that have some oversight over CATS. I will say that I believe that the advice that the MTC received from one of the city staff members, and legal, was basically following a city council way of doing things. And I'm not 100% sure how applicable that is. But again, it, I would say that a unanimous vote, as staff, we are fulfilling the requests of the MTC until they ask something different.
Ms. Johnson, I would love to get through the memo, if you don't mind, can we proceed? I need to talk to these, through these points. Your position is clear and noted, and we will continue to think about that issue again. Nobody has said that there will not be that outside review. I'm just hopeful that we can kind of reach an alignment with the MTC and then decide together whether we think there is a need for the benefit of the public, for this group, for us to get outside validation. But I would like to just quickly go through the points here. The idea behind this memo is, let's talk about what council should do, let's specifically talk about our role in the events going forward. So, what you have in here is a, for a level set, you have an enumeration of the issues that we're aware of that have come to our attention, and a comment on where we are today on these different issues, and then a suggestion as to next steps. And certainly, a key suggestion is that we do have a working group of council members who will be on an ongoing basis, so not just a monthly meeting like ours, but on an ongoing basis, will be responsible for interacting with Mr. Cagle, conducting interviews if necessary, or taking whatever actions seem appropriate in order to resolve what's in these memos from NC DOT SSO. And we will have on our agenda for this committee for the next few months, every time, we will have an update on CATS. And so, that we will then, during that, the working group will report back on what they have seen, aside from any real-time disclosures. So, if anything comes up that everybody needs to know, it will be made public immediately, but we will get updates from that working group, and therefore, the council will be able as a body to weigh in on how we address these, because it's clear that, I think we share the feeling that somehow there's a responsibility on each of us for this, and I want everybody on council to feel involved in the steps that we take in order to fix it. So, if I may, I'm just going to quickly go through this memo, talk about the issues that we know about, and give you a little bit of a status. On the derailment thing, this is probably the most controversial, high-profile event that occurred, and it seemed to trigger a lot of the other disclosures, so I'd like to take a closer look at that. And again, I'll just, for the record, read what is in the memo. "On May 21, 2022, one of three-wheel assemblies on a CATS Blue Line train overheated and seized up, causing the wheel to lose its natural position on the track. The train came to a stop and the passengers got off. There were no injuries, and there is no recurrence of a train's failing in this manner while in service. The technical term to describe this event is derailment, which particularly in the wake of the Norfolk Southern tragedy that occurred after the CATS incident last year, has led to some alarming media reports and apprehension about rail service." So, where are we now? CATS reported the event to NC DOT State Safety Oversight, SSO, and followed all regulatory requirements in documenting and investigating the root cause of the incident. CATS also worked with Siemens, the manufacturer of the equipment, to investigate the root cause of the bearing failure, and CATS continues to monitor the axle bearings on the light-rail vehicles. CATS has submitted a corrective action plan, several, to NC DOT SSO, and they accepted those on March 2, 2023. There were some exchanges of correspondence, all of this will be made available to everybody, but we did reach a point where the NC DOT SSO had accepted the CATS corrective action plan. The light-rail vehicles are inspected weekly to identify any possible signs of a recurrence of the failure, and heat strips have been applied to all wheel assemblies. Until CATS and Siemens can complete necessary work on the wheel assemblies, the CATS Blue Line will continue to operate at a reduced... Line will continue to operate at a reduced maximum speed of 35 miles an hour. This operating restriction has not resulted in a reduction of the service level, and when riding from terminus to terminus of the Blue Line adds between two to four minutes in trip time. So going forward, review and publish the incident reports and related documents, determine if further investigation and disclosure is needed related to the incident. So I think we just need to be clear here that derailment is alarming. It's an alarming word. I believe that Mr. Kegel at one point said there was a catastrophic failure of the, of this wheel unit, which again, is a technical term, meaning that the unit failed beyond kind of recovery. It wasn't a catastrophe. It was a catastrophic failure, meaning that unit was not, was not able to be restored to service. So again, I think the plan for the working group and the ongoing reporting to the city council is to look at the incident reports, find out what has been done already in the course of meeting the requirements related to an incident like this, and then determine, we as a group can determine whether or not there's information that is not in those reports that we need. So that's the thought about that. The second issue is the Link's Blue Line maintenance not timely. During the investigation of the May 21, 2022 incident, it was determined that CATS had failed to complete the 300,000 and 600,000 mile overhauls of the wheel assemblies for the vehicles. This deferred maintenance was determined to be a contributing factor in the derailment. So this is a serious issue. CATS is working with Siemens now to accelerate the maintenance program. The first step is to request the purchase of additional dollies and to amend the current maintenance contract with Siemens to include the entire LRV fleet and the accelerated work schedule. Next steps, request for council action on April 10 to review and approve the purchase of additional six sets of dollies. And these are needed in order to speed up the delivery of the wheel sets to Siemens for the maintenance that they need. In addition, on April 10 through 24, depending on Siemens and RCA for review approval of an amendment to the current service agreement with Siemens to include all LRVs and expedite the maintenance schedule. Mr. Kegel told us about this in the meeting. There's a cost associated with it. I'll get to that in a minute. So we will be taking action to make sure that those things take place and that we move in a, with all possible speed on the service. Third issue, missed bridge and parking deck inspections. During the week of March 6 to 10, an operations division employee disclosed to Mr. Kegel that the operations division had not completed required inspections of bridges and elevated structures associated with the Blue Line in 2021. Mr. Kegel reported this situation to the FTA and NC DOT SSO and instructed staff to immediately secure a bridge inspection contractor to complete the inspections. Current situation is the inspections did start on March 20 with an estimated schedule of 90 days to complete inspections for the 37 elevated structures. The inspection contractor is providing weekly reports of their findings so that CATS can take the appropriate action if needed. And again, the working group will see those weekly reports and will share any content as appropriate, make them public. And the next steps, CATS is sharing the weekly reports with NC DOT SSO, will publish the final inspection report when completed, and the final inspection report is estimated to be completed in the next six months. So we're acting on that one currently and immediately. Issue four, communication failures. So I think this was something that really troubled a lot of us, was hearing about these things and wondering how it was that we didn't hear about them before. The manager has addressed this to a certain extent in point five of his plan, which is a general kind of citywide interaction with the ACMs to review our communication process. I will note, though, in the current status that the three most senior executives at CATS, those responsible for knowing and sharing what was going on within the organization, have left the employ of the city. Since taking office in December last year, CATS interim CEO Brent Kegel has been conducting extensive interviews with CATS staff to gain an understanding of the culture that led to poor performance at CATS and the lack of communication with elected officials and the public. It should be noted that these interviews and other steps Mr. Kegel has taken in the course of taking over at CATS are the reason the previously unreported issues have now come to light. I think we're on a good path here. I appreciate that Mr. Kegel brings the management expertise that he demonstrated so clearly running the airport to bear on this problem. And again, this committee and council can respond to his ongoing investigation as we receive information about it. So the next steps there are formalized notification and communication procedures, promote the existing city hotline. So there is one, and we just need to make sure everybody knows about it and that it gets used appropriately. But that exists already. Share interview summaries with council and the public, implement the manager's strategy as he has described. NC DOT conflicts, there was evidence of disputes or of sort of tension between NC DOT and CATS. Managers, one of whom in particular had a very bad relationship with NC DOT, have departed. CATS has stepped up engagement with NC DOT. And again, note that the corrective action plan was accepted by NC DOT on March 2 of 2023, which means that in their opinion, it's okay for us to operate the trains. They don't perceive a risk to passengers. They do require, however, because of the issue with the rolling stock, that we limit the speed of the trains to 35 miles an hour until all of those, until the wheel sets have been repaired. So the next steps there, disclose the documents that are critical. Once again, I have these reports that I pulled offline, and we will make sure that they are circulated and that any communications from CATS to NC DOT are available to us and the public. CATS financial condition. So this is something that we need to think about. We were told that the necessary maintenance and repairs to CATS train is going to be expensive, and it's on us to pay for it. The manufacturer doesn't take any responsibility. There is also the prospect that we have to modernize the bus fleet, and we've heard about the fact that some of the buses are past their shelf life. So there is going to be a financial burden on CATS. I have a personal concern about this, but as it stands, there are no known issues. The debt rating at CATS remains double A, I believe, Mr. Manager. And CATS has advised us that they have sufficient capacity for the repairs and the fleet renewal. So our action on this one is to verify that condition and capacity. So those are the major issues. I did want to ask Mr. Kegel to comment on some news that he told me he had since the drafting of this memo.
Yes, sir. So we will, we will get to a place where hopefully I don't have to provide you with new information, but I guess I do need to provide you with new information and ask that another item possibly be considered for review of the work group. New information is simply this. About a week ago, just over a week ago, our rail operations manager came to me with an issue. The issue is that due to a high level of vacancies in general across, across our rail division, but specifically in our Rail Operations Control Center, or the ROCC, referred to as the ROCK. There have been times when CATS was operating the ROCK with one rail controller on duty at a time. This is not, this is not an ideal situation. Certainly, we would prefer to always have two rail controllers on duty at time. And the ideal situation would be two rail controllers plus a chief rail controller on duty at all times. When the rail manager brought this to my attention, we started working immediately with HR to better compensate the controllers, because we are going to have to move into a mandatory overtime situation with the controllers to ensure that we have two controllers on duty at all times. We are prepared to implement that. In fact, we'll be, I'll be leaving this meeting to talk to the controllers about these specifics at noon today, virtually again because of my situation, but do need to talk to the controllers. However, on Friday night, NC DOT SSO, apparently they had received an anonymous complaint regarding this situation. Again, don't know from who, but anonymous complaint. So on Friday night, the NC DOT SSO sent out some of their staff to do an unannounced inspection. They did find that for a period of approximately two to three hours in the morning of Friday night, Saturday morning, basically 11:30 PM to about 2 AM, there was a situation where the ROCK only had one controller assigned and provided service or on duty. They have informed us, again, that this is an unacceptable situation. We agree, and we have already provided the corrective action plan, which is make sure that there is a minimum of two controllers at all times in the ROCK. Now, to do that, we're going to have to go into some overtime situations, some mandatory overtime situations, and we are going to be compensating the controllers for that. And we will be getting much more aggressive or trying to find more aggressive ways to recruit new controllers. I will say the controller position is a very technical position. So we do believe that even with aggressive recruiting, we could take three to six months to really be able to work through the staffing issues where we have adequate staffing that would prevent us from having to use some of these additional overtime measures. But I wanted to bring that forward to you. And we will be sharing this same information with all of city council and the NTC, as well as the NC DOT notice that was sent to me on Saturday later today with, with the rest of council and the NTC.
So Mr. Kegel, will you communicate with us in writing about what you just described and circulate the memo?
Yes, sir.
And then we can take into consideration how we act on that going forward. I want to try and give Ms. Craig some time, and so I'm sorry about this. I knew we were going to be pushed. But I think right now, the real question is, are people okay with this general framework? Are there issues that we left out? We will have an opportunity tonight in our full session to talk about it some more. So unless there are additions, amendments, or objections, yes, Mr. Mitch, you want to speak?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to be very brief, because I would like to hear a report as well. But I think it would be helpful today at 5, at 5 or 6:30. Issue number four, I would like to see a timeline, we'll say communication failures. I'm very troubled that it happened on May 21, 2022. Then on March 6, 2023, NC DOT got a SSO report, but then council was not notified to March 13. Why was there no correspondent in 11 days? So I'd like to see a timeline from you, Mr. Kegel and city manager. What took place? Why wasn't there a communication to council? Because I think that's enough time to inform us before hearing about it publicly on March 13. So can we have a timeline later on this evening? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So are we good for the moment? Yes, Ms. Johnson.
Okay. So we just heard Mr. Kegel give us another update of another safety issue. This speaks to timing of the essence. This is why I don't think the citizens have time for the bureaucracy of a work group and then sending it to this question to the NTC if this is sufficient. I think this, that confirms the need that we need a third-party review to take a look at all of the operations. We don't know what we don't know. So if the FTA is a technical review, I think that's great. I think that's a great suggestion. But that objective third-party review, I think this is important. I also think this speaks to a governance issue. So maybe there would be something to be referred to the governance committee. There's a, to change the culture. It's not just CATS. I mean, if there were opportunities for all departments to have information that flows to council without us being reactive. We don't know what our OSHA reports are. We don't know other departments where there might be safety deficiencies. So I just think this really opens up an opportunity for a governance structure where we are receiving reports from the manager on, on, in issues of operations, because we're not currently receiving that. We don't ask for that. So this is an opportunity for that, for the governance to be changed. But as far as the Transportation Committee, I think what Mr. Kegel just described is another NCD report that speaks to an unacceptable practice, that we don't have time for work groups and to address. I think that this, that just confirms that we need to act sooner or later, than later. The NTC has made the recommendation, and I would say that we move forward with the NTC recommendation as well as the FTC or the FTA, excuse me, FTA recommendation. I think that speaks to our willingness and our goal to be transparent and responsive to the needs for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Your position on that is very clear. Personally, I have the view that I've already expressed. So I think for the moment, it'll come down at some point to a majority council vote on the timing, not, not whether, but the timing of any, you know, RFP action. So if it's okay with everybody, I would like to let Ms. Craig speak and give you the last few minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And if it's okay with you and committee, I'll just skip the presentation, just give you a quick verbal update. So in two weeks, at your zoning meeting, we will have four text amendments that will come before you for public hearing. Two of those are cleanup text amendments, and the other two have more of a policy basis. One of those is to amend the UEO for where landfills are allowed. These are the land clearing and inert debris landfills. So we don't get very many of these, but it has come to our attention that the residents, city council, and county commission would like to further limit where these are allowed in our communities. So that's what that text amendment is for. The other text amendment relates to drive-throughs and multifamily and our center place types. And this really is a bridge between the zoning translation and the alignment rezoning, where we have parts of our city that will translate to a commercial zoning district that is inside of a center where we would like to have multifamily and not want to encourage drive-throughs. And so until we get to a place where we can rezone those as part of the alignment rezoning process, we will be limiting drive-throughs and allowing multifamily in our commercial zoning districts and center place types. So I know that sounds a little confusing, but it's really, in essence, a bridge between zoning translation and alignment rezoning process, where we just, the zoning translation can't do everything for us, so it's a gap. So that will go, again, I said, public hearing in two weeks on the 17th, and then a decision...
May 15.
May 15. Thank you. Thank you, sir. And then I wanted just to mention really briefly about the community area planning process. So we started our workshops last week, had one in person, I'm sorry, one online, two in person. And really, I'm asking you to encourage your constituents, your colleagues, your friends, your relatives to pay attention to these and attend. We're trying to get the word out in different ways. And really, a lot of the focus will be, you know, talking about what the community area planning process is. But we are also sitting down at tables with a bunch of maps and really starting to talk about what sort of refinements might be necessary to the policy map, and guiding the residents through a series of discussions to help inform our future changes to that map. So it's really important for the residents to get involved. We're starting over on the, on the west side and really just working around the clock through all the different districts. And so if you could please encourage your constituents to participate. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me or to Alicia Osborne, who is the area planning project manager, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. We had two last week, and they weren't very well attended. And so we just need the luxury of a runway so we can inform neighborhood associations and neighborhood leaders, et cetera. And so we just need more. I only found about it the week before.
Right. And I believe you were provided in the council packet some things that you can just send out, but I'm talking to Jason about other ways that we can get more information now to the community, what sort of communication ideas that he has. And so he has some things that we're going to be working on this week. But yes, we'll make sure that we'll, that you have what you need to be, to be able to send out information to...
Just in a runway. You need to know where, when, and, you know...
Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to follow, Councilman Graham, I think we got three that's going to occur in April before we meet again on May 1st, so to Councilman Graham. Somehow, just highlight those three and put those in front of us. I think it'd be helpful. But second, kudos to the planning staff.
But second, kudos to the planning staff. Committee, I would tell you, item number nine, land clearing and debris has been a big issue that Councilman Graham, Councilman Johnson, and Councilman Mayfield, his proposal for one in Oakdale, I brought it to staff. I have to give Solomon fortune, and, oh, gosh, oh, she's going to kill me.
Shannon Frye.
Shannon Frye.
Oh, and Nan Peterson.
Thank you. And Nan Peterson, a lot of help. We went to a community meeting. So thank you so much for responding to an important need in our community that needs to be addressed, and I say we're going to create a new category called ML-2 for land debris. OK.
So that so they will only be allowed in that district and under prescribed conditions under a conditional setting?
And then conditional zoning, so they will have to fire rezoning to get the public involved.
Correct.
Because this one has been a nightmare for the citizens out there in Oakdale. So thank you, staff. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. If there's nobody else, Ms. Craig, these topics are very important. We'll try to make sure to have a larger segment available for you to provide an update. But I think the key question now is, does this committee have any comments or can we just it's informational basically at this point, right? So do you need a vote from us?
For today, we'll go to a public hearing in two weeks.
Yes. So I guess all we need is a nod to be able to say tonight to the full Council that we are supportive of these changes. Is that OK? All right.
Great. Thank you.
And look at that, 11:32.
You're the man. Phew, you're the man.
Anything else for the committee? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
All right. All in favor, get up and leave.
Ha ha. Good job.
All right. Look at that, 11:32.
You're the man. Phew, you're the man.
Anything else for the committee? All right. Thank you. 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 All right.
Welcome back, Ma. Glad to have you back. James Mitchell, Vice Chair.
Congratulations on your newest addition, LaWanna Mayfield, Committee Member.
Congratulations, Chairperson. And this is Dante Anderson, District One, Committee Member.
Thank you all so much. I'll go ahead and introduce staff. Could you please introduce yourselves?
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Sheila Simpson from the Human Resources Department.
Good afternoon. Ryan Bergman, Budget Director.
Congrats, Ms. Eschmira Braxton-Winston, Mayor of Pro Tem.
Marie Harris, Strategy and Budget.
Jaliu, Strategy and Budget.
Renee Askew, City Manager's Office.
Looks like we have everyone. Did I miss anyone? Looks like we're ready to get started here. We have two important topics.
It's voice.
So.
My mic's off.
Can you all hear me?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We do have about six guests here in the room as well. Would you like them to introduce themselves?
Yes, please.
Caleb Cedros from Charlotte Equitable Development Commission.
Congratulations, Temple. This is Carolyn Millen, Member of Equitable Development Commission.
Matt Hassett, City Treasurer, Finance.
Cherry Smith, Strategy and Budget.
And we have our interns. Go right ahead.
Claire McGee, Legal Intern.
Austin Panamino, Intern for City Attorney's Office.
Mason Butner, also an extern with the City Attorney's Office.
I think we're ready, Madam Chair.
All right, we've got a whole village here, so that's great. I had talked to Mr. Bergman and Mr. Vice Chair before the meeting. So what we're going to do, we are going to go through items that are time-sensitive. So first, we'll go ahead with our budget workshop review because we do have Budget Workshop coming up on April 6th. So, Mr. Bergman, if you want to go ahead and walk us through our Budget Workshop overview.
Absolutely. Thank you. So we do have a workshop on Thursday, starting at 1:30. We did add a little bit more time to get through one more item that we weren't able to get through last month. So you can see on the updated schedule here, we've been able to get through everything with the exception of the Water and Stormwater Budget Outlook from March 9th. So we will add that to this workshop. And you can see the schedule, pretty heavy schedule, with revaluation, revaluation impacts and staying in place strategies. And then all of our enterprise funds will come and present their budget outlook. So if we go to the next slide, similar to what we did the last couple of workshops in the committee prior, I'll talk a little bit about each presentation, just one slide per presentation, to talk about what we're trying to get out of it and the discussion that will be had. The first presentation, the County Assessor, Ken Joyner, will come in. He'll talk about the citywide results. He'll talk about the actual process, some of the citywide impacts, deadlines, and give him an oppor- give council an opportunity to ask questions of him. If we go to the next slide, after that is when we'll talk about some of the impacts and where it starts to impact Charlotte residents. As a reminder, revaluation is something the state requires, that the county conducts, that the city really doesn't have a whole lot to do with. But it does, of course, impact tax bills for residents. So revaluation on its own gives no more revenue to the City of Charlotte if done at a revenue-neutral tax rate. So what we're going to talk about is, we'll kind of explain how a revenue-neutral tax rate is figured out, talk about the impacts. We will provide maps for each of you in your packet on some of the district-by-district impacts from some of the assessed value. And then we'll get in, we'll have Sean Heath from Housing and Andrew Bowen from IT come in to talk a little bit about the anti-displacement programs, overview of tax relief programs, and then also some of the data we have to try to answer some of your guys' questions. If we go to the next one, then we will bring in CATS to talk about their budget outlook. I know that the Transportation Committee talked a little bit about CATS this morning. The budget process for CATS is a little bit different because of the MTC. So some of this information has already been presented to the MTC. But similar to past years, we do run everything through our Budget Workshop process as well. So CATS will come in and talk about their investments, some of the things that they feel they need to emphasize, and the financial outlook for FY '24. They have already indicated that no fair increase is planned. Okay? And then Water and Stormwater will come in and talk about the outlook for them. Both Water and Stormwater are extremely dependent on capital projects. That's by far the biggest part of their budget, to the tune of more than two-thirds of their budget. So some of the stresses on capital projects and inflation and project inflation are certainly impacting Charlotte Water and Charlotte Stormwater. And Angela Charles and Mike Davis will be on hand to talk about those. And then finally, we will, if we go to the next slide, Haley Gentry will be here to talk about aviation and their budget outlook. There is a lot going on at the airport, some pretty heavy growth out there. And they'll talk about their five-year CIP plan and then some of the things that they've shared in the past, including the cost per employment and some of the other information out there. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Eschmira.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. And when will the pre-read materials be sent out for this Budget Workshop?
We will, the answer to last workshops, Q and As should be sent out by the end of the day. And the pre-read materials, the only thing it would be is the mapping materials that we're working on, which we intend to put into the binder for you when we give you the presentations.
Got it. And if you can go back to the CATS slide, where I saw increased investments.
In which slide? Okay, gotcha.
Could you also, what I would like to see is a side-by-side comparison of previous budget cycle to what is being proposed.
Got it. Yep, we can do that.
And Madam Chair, Ms. Mayfield also had a question.
Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bergman, for the next slide, presentation four, excuse me, Water and Stormwater Budget Outlook. Can you please check in with staff to let them know? Also, come prepared to answer a question regarding current projects that we're having. We're getting, I believe my colleagues have also received emails, but I've recently been getting calls regarding sinkholes that are happening on residential property or right outside residential property that is because of failing infrastructure, and that's causing some challenges in neighborhoods where we have approved a lot of new development. So it would be helpful if they are prepared to come and speak to that a little bit when we're talking about our infrastructure needs, because we know we have a lot of piping out there that is corroded and that is older. Well, if what we're approving is causing challenges for our residents, whereas one individual, one of our elders, actually fell into a hole that was created in their backyard, and they were told that that is not city's responsibility, even though they did not have any challenges prior to a development that was approved by council, that would be helpful.
Yep, we'll make sure they're prepared to talk about that.
Committee members, any other questions?
Madam Chair, we'd like to follow up on Ryan. I just want to make sure we captured on March 9th at workshop number two. I know we talked about compensation and staffing and one new initiative, workforce development. I requested $500,000 for three people. I just want to make sure that's captured as we move forward, making sure we can, our budget reflect our priorities.
Yep, so your request is captured, and additionally, you asked some questions specific to workforce development and staffing, and those will be in the Q and A's that we give out tonight.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Anderson, do you have anything?
No, Madam Chair, I don't have any additional questions or comments.
So, Mr. Bergman, I just requested sort of side-by-side comparison to the previous year's budget. Could you also include an actual column, so budget of previous year and what was actually spent?
Yes, for FY '22, we can do that. FY '23, we wouldn't be able to yet, of course.
Right, I can. Well, it looks like with this, we don't have any additional questions on the budget outlook, so we can move on to the next topic. The next topic we have is the evaluation process for appointed staff. The city council has three direct reports, city managers, city attorney, and city clerk. And we have this annual process of evaluating each one of them. So, Ms. Sheila Simpson will walk us through what the current process is, and what I'm looking forward to is hearing from the committee members as to what changes we should be making for this, to this process, and if we should also make any changes in terms of the timing. So with that, Ms. Sheila, if you can walk us through the current process.
Good afternoon, and thank you again, Ms. Ashmira. Yes, I'll be glad to walk you through the question that was posed and the current process, and also best practices. So in terms of the question that was asked, there were two basic statements. One was, how do we assess and make recommendations, specific recommendations, on how to improve and have an effective performance evaluation process for to three appointees? The second request was to ascertain from the council suggestions and recommendations that you have to improve the process for both the appointees and yourself as a board. Next slide. Thank you. So to do that, the first step we took was to look through a legal framework for what those positions are, and how does the North Carolina statute read in terms of what those positions are, the purpose of those roles, and how they are appointed? And then, secondly, what does our city ordinance have in place around those positions as well? Then, secondly, we have a slide that outlines general best practices of an evaluation process. And then we have a slide that tells you what we currently do today. And then, lastly, as Ms. Ashmira just said, we would like to have feedback and input from you in terms of what would you like to see differently in this process. Next, that covers the city attorney position, the city manager position, and the city clerk. And as you can see, the city attorney shall be appointed by city council. The city manager shall be appointed by the city council. The city clerk is stated to be that there should be one, there shall be one, okay, for the state, okay? Now, if you move further down, under the city charter, the city charter uses similar language that the city, that the North Carolina statute uses for the manager and the attorney. The city charter states that the council shall appoint the manager, the clerk, and the attorney, all of whom serve at the pleasure of city council. Next slide. With that, in terms of performance review best practices, the very first thing is to discuss an evaluation process and a review process. And council generally does that, and we repeat that process over time. And then periodically, such as today, we will review our current state and decide if there are any changes that you would like to have in this process. The second step is, you have a summary of the accomplishments and the goals for the next year. And you always provide honest feedback, and you complete some type of instrument to provide that feedback. Today, we complete a survey that is electronic. We send it to all council members. Council members evaluate criteria for each of the positions, and that criteria is derived from your council priorities. So just as a reminder for you, in January, the council held a strategy session. And in that strategy session, you discuss your city priorities. In addition to that, you also discuss your city initiatives that align to those priorities. That information is then used to define the roles and responsibilities and the performance evaluation process for this city manager. Sorry.
It's okay, it's not another one at home.
Okay, okay. We just have a technical area here, so. The city manager, and then also, we mapped something similar for the city attorney and then the city clerk by their roles. So just as a quick reminder, the city priorities were great neighborhoods, safe communities, economic development, transportation and planning, and well-managed government. The city initiatives that you all discussed was affordable housing, Charlotte 2040 Plan, Corridors for Opportunity, mobility, higher Charlotte, small, and minority business development, and digital device. That's just a refresher for you. Next slide. So in terms of best practices, you ascertain performance goals and objectives. That's always tied to your priorities. And then, after that, you focus on where you want your organization outcomes to be. Where do you want your primary time to be spent? What are the highest priorities? And how do you evaluate those things? Then, based on the criteria that you have established with your appointees in terms of helping them set their priorities, you would then evaluate their performance. It is a mutual process, so it is a continuous process as well. So the feedback that you're providing should be ongoing throughout the year. The evaluation itself is just a more formalized process to aggregate your individual feedback to each of your appointees. But the process should be occurring all throughout the year, giving them all feedback. And then we have a meeting, a conference meeting. In that conference meeting, it is attended by each of your appointees separately and the board. And when you attend the conference meeting, the appointee is having a discussion with you. And you're reprioritizing with that appointee for the next year, but you're also summarizing what happened in the previous year. And then you also discuss gaps and opportunities for improvement, okay? That's what's happening. Lastly, in terms of the instrument that we provide, we provide a way for all council members to provide feedback. In terms of a best practice, it is a best practice that that feedback is not anonymous. And when you map that to how organizations are ran, typically, an employee does not receive anonymous feedback from their boss. So that is part of the best practice. Next slide. So in our current process, we have the Human Resources Department. We coordinate with the mayor's office, and we determine a path forward in terms of when to have the performance evaluation. And council has decided that each of these evaluations should be near the beginning of the fiscal year, okay? We will distribute, we, meaning human resources, will distribute an instrument to you so we can ascertain and capture your feedback. You provide the feedback for each one of your appointees. They're separate processes, although I'm talking about them together, but they're all separate processes. Then you meet to have a performance conference with your appointee. Prior to that, I should have said this, your appointee also assesses themselves and provides you a list of their accomplishments, and that list is derived from the things that they have done and performed that directly relates to your council priorities that we just discussed earlier, how you set those priorities. They provide you that feedback. You take that feedback along with other information that you may have, and then you are evaluating them on a performance instrument. In that instrument, you have a way to provide a numerical rating system, but also a comment section for every one of the performance dimensions. You're able to provide specific comments for your appointee. You have a meeting in private with your appointees, and then, when the appointee leaves the room, you discuss as a board how you would like to compensate that individual. And when you make that compensation decision, you approve it formally in an open session meeting. Next slide. Next slide, please. So for this year, you have determined that you would like to hold the performance meeting for each one of your appointees on these dates. For the city manager, it would be held in June, June 20th, the city clerk, June 26th, and the city attorney in July, July 10th. Those are the proposed dates for those performance evaluations. And lastly, this is a time for you all to give me feedback in terms of what part of the process would you like to change? As Ms. Ashmira said, what changes would you like to make? In addition to that, are there any changes you would like to see in terms of the timeframes?
Thank you so much, Ms. Simpson, and I also appreciate the pre-read materials that you provided. I did get an opportunity to look at the state statute language and our city charter, so thank you for that. A couple of things in terms of feedback to this process. I would like to see some sort of consistency so that we are doing the evaluation every year at the same time, so that there are no surprises. And second is, I would like committee's feedback on whether we should have an independent firm assist us throughout this process. I have seen where other cities will hire an independent third-party, a consulting firm, that will be assisting the council with the process in lieu of HR. So those are just two things that I have for now. I would like to hear from the committee in terms of their feedback. So why don't we just go around the room here and get your feedback? Let's start with Mr. Vice Chair, and then we'll followed by Ms. Mayfield and Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so I do have, if we can go to the slide, current evaluation process. Because I would like for us to add a new evaluation, too. I think we heard some of this from our last evaluation period. And I think we need to have a 360度feedback. I think a 360-degree feedback allows council to get comfortable that those three, when you think of the leaders we have, the city attorney, the city clerk, and city manager, I would like, I think it would be helpful to get feedback, how do they get along with their colleagues? How do they get along with their staff? And more importantly, as we talk about succession planning, it would give us a good idea about, is that, do they think the talent is within the staff or just a future process we have to go outside? And so I think a 360度feedback is something to be helpful, too, because I remember it came up with the, with some of the conversation about the city clerk. I love Stephanie to death. I know what Stephanie does, because I'm engaged with her so often. But there's a question always come about, how many of us engage with her and what does she really do? I think if we got a 360度feedback, Stephanie, other team members would tell all of us what great job she's doing, how she's grooming her staff, and how she addresses having staff that will fill vacancies. So I hope I get support of the committee to add a 360度feedback as a new criteria. The other question I would ask Madam Chair is on the valuation date. And I would like that we be consistent, to your point, and do all the evaluations the month of June. July 1st is the new fiscal year for us, and I think we need to put, we need to have all of them consistent. I mean, we got June 20th, June 26th, and then we don't have the city attorney's evaluation till the new fiscal year, which is July 1st. If we can keep all of them in the month of June, I just think that flowed very easily with this council, bless you, Mayor Pro Tem. As we kick off July 1st, the new fiscal year, we will have all the evaluations and all the salary adjustments in hand. The last thing I would just like to say is, somehow I think we need to have a tool, Ms. HR, that matches, you articulate our priorities. I think a lot, though, we don't have those priority lines aligned with the three people we kind of responsible for, and that's how we like to measure them. So somehow, there could be a tool that, you know, here's the city manager, here's our priorities. How did he do well on those priorities? Here's the city clerk. I think one thing I got really excited about Stephanie, how she has streamlined the nomination process. That used to be a nightmare, but her staff with Kirk have made that almost a seamless process. So we can have some type of criteria to match priorities based on their performance, I think would be very helpful. And then, Madam Chair, to your point, having an outside consultant to come in. I'd like to hear more about that. I mean, I think HR do a great job of doing it right now, but if it's a best practice from other cities, I would like to hear the pros and cons. So Sheila hasn't complained yet about her staff taking that responsibility, and I would love for it to stay inside, but I'd like to get your thoughts on having an outside evaluator to work with HR. So those are my thoughts, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mitchell. I agree with you. Sheila has been doing a great job. But you know, it gets a little difficult to assist when your boss is getting evaluated. So I think if it's an independent process, where we actually have consultant, consulting firm who have done this with other cities, have experience, but then also directly reports to the city council, we can make this process just more independent. In terms of your feedback around 360° from subordinates, I think that's a great idea. And we both agree on the timeline. It's got to be consistent, whatever timeline that council comes up with, whether it's June, it might be difficult to do all three evaluation in one month. So if it's like May to June timeframe, where we do two in May and one in June, whatever it is that we work out. But it's just got to be consistent. And in terms of priorities reflecting. we've got to make sure that our priorities reflect everything that we do. Also, I'd like to include our state statute and charter requirements as one of our evaluation criteria, that all of this, just the basic state statute requirements are sort of being checked off as we go through the evaluation process. So that's all I have.
Okay, so Madam Chair, once you've already identified, once I speak, and Councilmember Anderson, I also want to acknowledge that Mayor Pro Tim would like to speak after Councilmember Anderson as well. So as for committee, for the idea of an outside consultant, I would rather we stay within our process. Our HR director presents the information. Unfortunately, council has gone even previously with not reviewing staff in a timely manner. And therefore, this most recent reviews had to encompass the previous year and the current year. Unless that is a request coming from HR, I don't see a need for us to identify a new budget line item to pay an outside group to come into our city when we have highly capable staff right here. If we would just actually adhere to when staff sends the information out to council, if we actually completed our surveys and did the work that we need to do on the front end. I do agree that we can look at moving that time up. Keeping in mind, we're in the beginning of April right now. So now we're backdating, so we need to definitely check with HR for the feasibility, even if it's that last week of May, or that second, that since we're looking at June 20th and 26th, if it's that, looking at that week of June 12th to the 16th, to try to get them all in in our fiscal time. We want to be respectful of making sure that we're not creating an undue burden by trying to get it back to May. So I would definitely be relying on our HR director and team to let us know the best way to back that in. And I am glad that my colleagues liked the 360 idea, which I submitted to HR last year. So for me, it wasn't really for our city clerk, because as you mentioned, Councilmember Mitchell, I know what our city clerk does. So, and have been very engaged with not only how she makes sure we have everything we need, but what her role has been on an international level as the head of city clerks and how she's kept the city at the forefront. My greater concern was making sure that 360, that we were able to truly evaluate the city manager. I personally had a number of concerns of his management team and things that were happening in the community regarding hitting our diversity and equity goals, regarding how we have supported and/or created opportunities through our minority and small business enterprises, how things were falling through the cracks, and the way to, for me, to hold the staff accountable, especially in procurement and other departments, where I've had to have meetings with business owners and with different leaders in the community, is through the city manager's office. So he needs to be accountable for the decisions that his staff makes, including unfortunately, another most recent decision where you receive a text message instead of a phone call, and then council finds out about it six to eight months later. So the 360, for me, was to ensure that we have a very clear and level feel for all three individuals, that we are responsible for language says, appointing, hiring, and/or firing those three positions. In order for us to be effective, then we need to be able to have a way for staff to participate. Because, and I have shared this with our director of HR, I'm concerned with the high turnover that we're having in our executive leadership team. I am concerned that when we have an individual who is about to retire and challenges happen, where others who probably should have something written in their file regarding how they have interacted and not proceeded with the stated and voted upon priorities of this council, how are they being managed? That can only be addressed on our end through the reported, the reporting system of the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney. For our HR director, you did state our priorities again. It would have been great if in this PowerPoint presentation, that slide was added so that we can be reminded on what our priorities are. Because I don't know if all of council remembers what we've decided on as far as our priorities, so that we can be consistent when we're having these discussions. And as Madam Chair and Vice Chair mentioned, making sure that we have the right priorities associated with the right team member. Because I'm not expecting to have the same priorities for the city manager that I have for the city clerk. But within our priorities, what are, what we should be focusing on for our clerk, for our attorney, our expectations, and for the city manager? The city manager is going to have a lot more expectations. And my personal expectation is there is a lot more scrutiny in that role, because you play a much greater part in how we grow when we, as a council, have adopted a policy of this being a great place to work. When we have over 100 positions that have been vacant, and if those positions have been vacant from anywhere from six months to two years, there's a challenge. If we all are out in community and people are coming up to us, whether that's at the grocery store, at Walgreens, wherever it's at, to say that they applied for a position with the city and can't even receive a callback or any type of response, that doesn't fall on our HR director. That falls on those individual departments. That falls on the city manager. What are your department leads doing? And once it's very clear that the expectation is that he will be evaluated differently, that will then trickle down for his staff to know that they will be evaluated differently, because the way that they show up in this very diverse community that we have is going to be a direct reflection on his report. Those things, I think, are very important, and it would create consistency. I believe our HR director had already started pulling some, pulling some information together for us last year when we were going through the review process. If you need additional time, please let us know. Because for my colleagues, as well as for my initial recommendation for us to do this, via email to all of staff, as well as to our director, if you have the ability to get that in place in time for this current review, that will be helpful. I would hope that it will, for the simple fact that we started the conversation previously to try to get aligned. But I definitely want to reiterate the idea of us identifying another budget line item to bring some outside consultant in to basically oversee our HR department is not something that I would support, unless that is something that our HR director specifically says that they need or they would want in order for them to do their job. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. Ms. Simpson, would you be able to tell us in North Carolina, other cities' evaluation process? And how it is currently being done? I know that's not something you'd be able to provide today, but I would like to get that report before our next committee meeting.
Ms. Ash Mara, yes, I can get that for you.
Yeah, I'd be interested in, you know, how many other cities are using outside consulting firms to evaluate, to help evaluate city managers, city attorneys, city clerk versus using HR?
Yes, I could do that. And to answer, to answer the other question that came up in terms of timeframe?
Yes.
Yes, from an administrative perspective, HR will be able to meet a May-June timeline for all three. So the root question is about changing your official calendar to accommodate your request.
Madam Chair, one more, just one more clarification. Because I think there may, since all of this goes in a minute, I just want to clarify what I thought I heard, because our HR director isn't evaluating her boss. She is just providing us the information. We are the ones that are doing the evaluation for the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney. So if we're going to get information as far as what is considered best practices, I wanted, I want to make sure that we're doing an apples-to-apples comparison. Because if other communities, if they have a process where it's not the council that's doing the evaluating, then that's not going to be helpful for us. But I want to make sure that we're clear in the language that we're using, because you do not evaluate your bosses. You're providing the information to council for us to be able to evaluate the three individuals that we are charged by statute to evaluate, correct?
Yes, ma'am, you are correct. From the information, we do have, our process, our current process is extremely consistent across the state. And with that basic process being that the board or the council evaluates their appointees. And the question that I thought I was answering was Ms. Ash Mara's question, which was, do any of these cities hire an external firm to help facilitate that process? So I did not ask that question of our other affiliates. And so I will go ahead and ask that question, Ms. Ash Mara. However, to your point, Ms. Mayfield, by far, the cities evaluate, the council members of those cities evaluate their appointees. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for clarifying that. That it is HR or whether it's a third-party, all they are doing is helping us gather the information. So in terms of 360-degree feedback, they will help us gather the feedback, whether it's HR or third-party consulting firm, they'll help us gather the feedback and provide us, provide to the council so that ultimately, we can do the evaluation. Was that, Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I thank my colleagues for the previous comments. I just have a few points. One is, I think we need to be clear on the framework for evaluation. And if the understanding that I've, that I heard earlier is the city priorities are effectively the objectives of these three individuals that we manage, the city manager, the attorney, and the clerk, then I, I believe we need to, that's fine if they're guiding principles, but I think we need to have some additional dot points under each, for each one of these positions that get, get further down to what we're really looking for them to deliver as it relates to outcomes, right? So I feel like our city priorities can be, you know, an overarching vision or mission statement for these three individuals, but there's different levels of specificity relative to the roles that they play that I believe, as a board, we should be looking at from an outcomes perspective. So if we are, and I, and I am in alignment of modifying the timeline of evaluation to align with our fiscal year, beginning and end, I think that, that is a good alignment. However, we just went through an evaluation process just a few months ago. And so this would be a truncated year of evaluation. And, and we still have not, to my knowledge, provided a mid-year evaluation or mid-year observation. And as I mentioned a few months ago when we went through this process, I am opposed to having new comments and perspectives come out at the end of the year when none of those perspectives have been shared throughout the entire year. So I think we owe all three individuals that opportunity to get some feedback from us mid-year or somewhere within the actual performance year. So if we are moving towards truncating an evaluation year to align with our fiscal year, which I agree with, I do believe that we should be providing some level of mid-year feedback or interim feedback now, and then that it's overdue. So that's, that's my perspective on that topic. If in any way, shape, or form, we are looking to modify the evaluation process of any of these three individuals that we manage, then I do believe we need to look at best practice that occurs throughout the state as well as other states, and potentially tap into a third-party to assure that we are setting up the right structure and framework so that there's transparency in how these individuals will be evaluated and transparency in our expectation of performance from the very beginning. And so if we're not modifying that process, then I, I'm not quite sure that we need a third-party involved. But if we are modifying that process, I think we, we probably should tap into some objectivity and expertise of a third-party to help usher us through that process. In addition to the 360-evaluation, which I'm certainly not opposed to, but when you have a 360-evaluation, to the chair's earlier point, that is effectively allowing city manager and clerk and attorney staff to have input in their evaluation. And so if someone is providing input or certain entities are providing input into an evaluation and managing the evaluation process, you just want to make sure that, you know, you have armed lengths transaction there and that that process is managed appropriately. So I don't know that that means that we need to hire a third-party or if we need to potentially have a council member or a working group council, of council, be a part of that overarching process as a steering committee. But I do think we just need to be thoughtful about that if we're going to introduce the 360, which I am certainly aligned with. And then lastly, I just really want to make sure, you know, when we, when you get to an end-of-the-year evaluation, we need to be speaking to what those objectives are that we laid out at the beginning of that year for either one of these three individuals. And if we are doing an assessment on something that we haven't laid out as an objective or an area of focus, then it's not really aligned with how we set out our expectations, because that's going to dictate behavior and actions throughout the, the evaluation year. So if we have not done that this year in a manner that we feel really good about, then I really believe as we transition into this new fiscal year, June-July, that we set out those objectives and areas of focus in a very clear, digestible, transparent way for all three individuals. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great input, Ms. Anderson. I, I think you hit the nail on the head, because when we talk about 360-degree evaluation, you're right, we had to be very thoughtful about how we go about that, where subordinates are comfortable sharing honest feedback. So if it's done by either working group of the council or a third-party, I think it gives them a comfort level. I just want to make sure that whatever process that we are, that council approves and builds consensus on, that we are providing that comfortable environment where we are getting honest 360-degree feedback. And in terms of mid-year, in corporate America, I've seen that, you know, there are no surprises at the end of the year evaluation, because a lot of the concerns, if there are any, would be brought up in our mid-year evaluation. So I, I think that would be something new that we would introduce, if that's something committee would like to proceed with. But that will have to be sort of, let's say if you're starting in June as the year-end evaluation, then it will have to be sometime in December, November. evaluation, then it will have to be sometime in December, November, December timeframe, where we'll be doing a mid-year evaluation. And it looks like there is consensus on 360-degree feedback. Also, there is consensus on being consistent on timeframe, whether it's May-June timeframe. And in terms of best practices, I also hear from Ms. Anderson that we would like to consider what other cities, not just in the state, but other states, what they are doing, and whether that's something based on that, if we would like to make any changes. So I know-
Madam Chair, remember Mayor Pro-Tam Blackston had a comment.
Yes, I was just going to introduce him. Okay, I know Mayor Pro-Tam, you have, do you have any feedback in this process?
Yeah, so I think this is a good, good conversation. You know, I think back to the policy question, how can council staff, appointees' performance be evaluated most effectively? Some of, some of the things that Ms. Anderson was, was saying really did resonate with me. I think we kind of ran into, we run into trouble at times when we're doing these yearly evaluations with being able to parse out all of the information and all of the work that we do and, and are supposed to hold our employees accountable for over, over the year. So sometimes, what Ms. Anderson said, I think is true, sometimes we'll bring in new information, right? Of course, we're dealing with, when we're running a city, the flavor of the day, you know, what's in the cycle of that week can sometimes put blinders on a lot of other things that have happened on the other, you know, 51 weeks surrounding that work. So sometimes it's more favorable because the budget worked out, you know, and, and kind of amassed some, some other issues, for instance, that we were dealing with. Or there might be a certain lawsuit in, in the news that might take up all, all of our energy. We don't really have a great way to kind of obje-, objectively recall some of those priorities, some of those requested outcomes, and, and evaluate those. So I don't know if that's, that's a outside consultant or a member of staff, you know, that really works with the city council to track these things, you know, questions that we ask to get information from and feedback, for instance. Sometimes we literally just don't remember because it was done in a memo sometimes seven and a half months ago. And they did their part, but it might have not been up to our expectations because they literally did what we asked them to do, and we didn't provide the feedback because it got lost, right? So, so on top of that, we have our defined group priorities, but we are 11 bosses, 12 bosses, right, that we have our own individual relationships and, and workflows with, and those are valid parts of the evaluation process, but there's no way, we don't have any kind of structure that, where we can kind of deep, demarcate and also share those bits of information. And I think those things are, are real important when we're, we're, we're trying to make decisions. I honestly, I don't know if it's as much of a 360, I'm, I'm, this 360 evaluation doesn't really speak to me as much as being able to evaluate the guidance and expectations that the 12 of us give, right? If, if they're providing the outcomes that we expect, that the 12 of us expect, I think that's the most important, right? And understanding what our requests are and how those requests are being fulfilled. There's no, nothing that really does that. We have questionnaires and things like that, but again, the recall of information, there's no way to, to, to really work with a staff member to go through, go through those things, right? We're not going through all of our text messages and emails month to month to say, hey, what did I, what did I, what, what did I ask of the manager, or the clerk, or, or, or the attorney, and, and, and how did they respond to that to hold them accountable? I think that is something that we really do need. Again, I don't know how you get there, but it's missing. And, and we end up having either, again, either kind of flavor-of-the-day analysis or even sometimes emotional analysis, and I, I don't think that's always fair. Ms. Simpson wants to respond.
Mr. Winston and Ms. Ashmira, so one point of clarification that I should make is that if the council decides that you would like to incorporate a 360, a 360 is a defined instrument, okay? So it is not a, it is not a feedback survey, okay? It is literally a defined instrument. And if we were to implement that, that would be administered by a third party, okay? So I just have to be clear, that would be administered for, by a third party. And the other thing that you should be aware of is when that is administered, a 360 is a personal development tool, it is not a performance management tool. So it is used in conjunction with a performance management tool, but it's not a substitute for, okay? So when you use that instrument, the feedback that is received by the organization is received by the individual to whom that 360 represents, okay? So as a body, you should not have an expectation that you're going to see all of the feedback that someone provided on, as an example, the city clerk's 360, okay? Because that instrument is a personal development instrument. So I just want to be clear on expectations, that if you really want to use a 360, it's at your liberty to do that, the board would decide, not for me to decide, it's for you to decide, but if you were, we would certainly use a third party to administer that. Just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson, for clarifying that. I wasn't aware that 360 was done by the outside third party, so that's great. But I do want to go back to Mr. Winston's point, because he raises a, a good point, because oftentimes there are requests that comes through, we all send an email or during our one-on-one meetings, whether it's with city manager, city attorney, where we ask for specific information or specific issue to be resolved, and there is no tracker, but there is no tracking tool where some of those, some of that issues are being addressed in a timely fashion, or some of them are getting lost. So we do need to address that as part of this evaluation criteria. How do we keep track of all the questions that are being asked by the council that are being addressed in a timely fashion? And I don't know an answer to that. I think that's something we got to raise and, and figure out, how do we get that addressed? And Mr. Winston also said something that really resonated with me when he shared that this evaluation process, sometimes when it's done at a particular time, it's more emotions-driven, where it's, it's may not be objective. And I, I think we got to address that as well, as part of the, as part of this process. But with the introduction of 360, there will be, it will be adding a new step, and it would be considered modifying our current process. So anything else that committee members have? I have written down all the points that committee members have raised in terms of the process, and I, I look forward to full council's feedback on all of that, and any additional feedback that they might have for us. Looks, we don't have anything else. I'll present this later tonight to the full council, and I look forward to their recommendations as well before we have the next steps on this. All right, well, without further ado, we have third item, and I know we have guest speakers for that. We have committee chair, Mr. Caleb Theodros, and I also heard Ms. Carolyn Millen is also in the room, who serves on the Equitable Development Commission, and this group has been working hard to provide us with recommendations. I know we have talked about equity and how important that is for the council, where all the voices are heard. So as part of that process, and part of the 2040 Plan, there was an Equitable Development Commission that was formed last year, where we wanted to make sure as we are investing in our infrastructure, we're really taking equity lens as part of this investment. And I would like to hear from Caleb and Ms. Millen on, in terms of what their recommendations are and what the commission's recommendations are, but I certainly appreciate the dedication of your team and so many hours that's been spent on this to, to gather feedback for us. So Caleb, are you in the room?
Yep, council member, I'm here. Yeah, and thanks so much for that introduction and all the council members that were able to join us. Over the past, maybe about a year, we've been trying to inform ourselves about different ways we can kind of guide development in the city, and obviously through an equitable lens. And so we receive presentations for everyone from the Budget Committee, the CIP, Corridors of Opportunity, and really try to focus our attention on, you know, specific actionable items we can bring before the council members. One thing we continue to, to see, and that's really where our recommendation lies, is around the community engagement. And so we were thinking that, you know, just looking at it from a first principle lens, oftentimes there is a disconnect between the informations that council members and even staff get from the community. And so there aren't necessarily standards citywide. And so what we wanted to do, and, and kind of the points that our recommendations discusses is the two main points, and I quickly have bullet points on these two items. So the biggest thing is the CIP dashboard. So the CIP dashboard gives a very good kind of outline over projects that are going on throughout the city using CIP funds. It was a bit of a surprise to me and even folks on the committee, because I had no idea this thing existed. And I'm relatively informed on what's going on and other, other folks on our, our board as well. And so we wanted to give certain suggestions over how we can essentially get the word out on the dashboard. And so there are a couple of points that we made, whether it's linking the dashboard to the CLT Plus app, adding information to the 311 homepage. Another point was the project description should also include the feedback. So folks that haven't necessarily seen the dashboard, with each project, it essentially outlines how much money it's taking for the project, where the project is located, certain timelines. But also, we wanted feedback from the community. So if there's a project four miles from my house, I should also see what the community members said about that project. And so we, we also wanted to see that added. And, and the last point on the dashboard was leveraging social media and an array of community outreach tools. We, we wanted to include social media, not only because, you know, folks are using it more, but even a sort of a bang-for-your-buck in informing citizens. We, we think people should be informed through social media and a bit more diverse set of tools. And so I guess the thinking around this is, you know, we, we're trying to look for ways to maybe introduce certain guidelines, but if there are also excellent tools that already exist, citizens should be informed. And so the overall ask for that second CIP dashboard is maybe a campaign of some sort to raise awareness around it, so, so folks know about it. The other point was around the community engagement standard operating procedure. And so like I said initially, citywide, we essentially wanted a set of standards set out for how community engagement is brought in. This is for maybe city infrastructure projects or different major city programs. And so the, we, we saw a lot of disconnect over certain standards, maybe engineering department has their own standards of how many folks we should talk to before a project. It might be disengaged from the folks that are in the community engagement division. And so overall, we wanted a certain set of structures, and some of the points that we outlined was, A, we wanted to support the guiding principles already established by the community engagement division. They did do some work in outlining certain bullet points over essentially the values behind the community engagement tool, and a lot of it was based around equity. So we definitely wanted to, to second that and give our statement of support. Second item is ensuring, obviously, engagement staff are aware of projects and programs. There are certain community relation positions where, you know, people within the city are focused on this specific area within Charlotte, and, you know, their entire job is to essentially keep a communication with the community. However, oftentimes, they're not even informed of some of the projects in their, in their area. And so this kind of speaks to some of the disconnects that may be taking place, and, and we wanted to ensure that they were also in the loop as far as what projects are going on. Third point was the standard operating procedure must request that each community engagement venture must first indicate the public participation goal as outlined in the IAP2 spectrum of public transporta-, oh, excuse me, participation. So that's, this page outlined right here. And so the IAP2 tried to set up a framework for what community engagement is like.
On the next slide?
Oh yeah, I believe so, yeah. It's on the next slide, but it essentially laid out a framework of what community engagement looks like. And so not every project is the same. Are you looking to inform citizens? Are you looking to consult? Do you want them a lot more involved? Are you looking to collaborate, empower, et cetera? And so before coming out and saying, we want to engage with the community, whatever projects or city staff should outline what is the goal of what you're trying to accomplish. And so because, you know, informing looks a lot different than, than consulting. And so another point, probably, probably the bigger one, was the quantifiable metrics in terms of community members engaged. And so we laid out a couple of bullet points and maybe what that should be based off of, but we were looking at investment size of the project, location of the project, type of projects, and public participation goal. And so these are outlines, we, we're not the subject matter experts over what these specific metrics would look like, but it's very important that there are metrics. I think oftentimes, we have these lofty goals, and we say, you know, the, the point of this community engagement, we want to be diverse. What does that even mean? Like, what percentage of folks are you trying to talk to? You know, this project is happening here, so maybe we want feedback from 20% of the population within a three-mile radius of this project. We're looking for very specific goals, and I think that, well, as a, as a committee, the city staff should essentially give us those goals. And also, you know, all of those goals don't necessarily have to be measured. Like, we don't know what a good job or a bad job right now really is, because those goals aren't really set in stone. And so what this will do is, if a project comes up to council and says, our, our stated goal was to talk to 20% of the population within a mile, we weren't able to do that, we only spoke to about 10%. This is actual feedback for them to essentially go back and suggest, where did we come up short on? And so it's more so a feedback mechanism for them, because, you know, we had conversations with the community engagement division, and, you know, I'm sure we were, we were kind of shocked to, to hear that there wasn't even a social media expert that worked with the team. And so in this day and age, you should have, and I think that these metrics will allow folks to see whether we're doing a good job, are we talking to enough people? When we're presenting the budget, how many percentage of the population have we talked to? And so, et cetera. But these are kind of the overall guidelines. And a specific, a couple more points is, the city's website should include feedback from each project. And so that's more so kind of like what we were saying with the CIP dashboard, but I think, you know, we can't only say we want community feedback if we're not letting folks know what that community feedback is. Because I think oftentimes, community engagement is, you know, we have this email, email us, let us know what you think. Well, we, we don't know, so city should know, like, this project passed, and there were 200 negative emails about it. So, you know, folks should know how the community felt before something was passed, and I think transparency around that would be good. Another point, the city's website should include the metrics set for each community engagement campaign. So the metrics we spoke of earlier, when we're posting it on the website, it should say the goal of this project is to talk to 15% or whatever that goal is, but it should at least state it. And then lastly, the standard operating procedure must include qualitative- And then lastly, the standard operating procedure must include qualitative feedback on how community engagement shaped the project. So this is more so, we talked a lot about quantifying these metrics, but we also wanted a personal touch to this. And so what that looks like, I think, is up to the city staff or whoever essentially works on this, but there needs to be feedback from the community over what this will look like. And so this is sort of the main areas that our commission has essentially focused on because, and tying that back to development, you know, I think whether you look at specific problems over, you know, the number of sidewalks within the city, it's, you know, essentially, okay, well, what is the budget for it? What does the community think? So no matter what issue we were talking about, about development, it kept going back to community engagement. So we felt like this is a very specific and important area that we wanted to focus our attention on, which is why our initial recommendation around this is around community engagement. I don't know, Carolyn, if you wanted to add anything to that?
Thank you all for letting me be here today, and I really wanted to say thank you for letting me be a part of this commission. We have a phenomenal group and staff, thank you, because y'all have to decipher what we're all coming out with. But we really want to make sure that, especially with the 2040 Plan and the UDO, that we can reach out and bring as many of the community as possible to the table because we go out every day and we hear from community. And they're like, I didn't even know this was going on, or I don't feel like anybody's hearing me. And we really need to bring as many people and be as transparent as possible bringing to the table. And I think what Caleb covered and what we've brought to y'all today is a great beginning to do that because we, you all know, we have a handful of stuff come June 1st that we're going to be getting hit with, and we need to make sure there's equitable balance across this city and, again, bringing everybody to the table. So thank you very much.
If there were any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Make sure, madam.
Thank you so much, Caleb and Ms. Millen. Appreciate the work that you have put in to deliver this. You are absolutely right. When I often go out in the community, especially neighborhood meetings, many residents are not aware of some of the projects that are already underway, and ensuring that community voice is being heard at every part of the process is very important. In fact, last year, we had this committee called Triple E Equity Engagement and Environment Committee that has been disbanded, but there was multiple deliverables out of that committee. Mr. Winston and I and Ms. Johnson served on that committee, and we wanted to make sure there was some sort of consistency in how we go about engaging our residents, whether it's 2040 Plan, whether it's UDO or CIP. So it's great to hear that similar feedback as we were discussing that as part of our Triple E committee assignment, that how we engage, how we engage residents, there's got to be a standard process for that. So maybe this tool will help us with that, but I look forward to hearing what committee members have to say, especially also Mr. Winston, who was part of the Triple E committee. So with that, committee members, any feedback?
Yes, Madam Chair. Let me applaud Carolyn and Caleb for what I call outstanding first steps for us. Just a suggestion, number one, can you go, well, his second slide, we did not have up there, the IPA Spectrum of Public Participation. I thought that was a home run when they talk about inform, consult, involve, collaborate, and empower. One thing I would like, you know, this committee or Caleb, you and Carolyn committee, when you talk about development, the 2040 Plan, the UDO, I do think there's one thing we need to have a conversation about, and that is community benefits. Because as development come into different communities, Caleb, you touched on it earlier, one community wants sidewalks on both sides, another community might need a stoplight due to traffic. And so if you all could, you know, when you look at that and say, maybe here is a takeaway or expectations from the community as they participate, here's our benefits. So has there been any discussion about coming up with community benefits as it relates to new development that's coming on?
Yeah, we didn't get specifics into actual project. This is more so, even if there is a community benefits program, it should also follow within the standard that's set. And so this is saying, if this is a program that's being introduced in this neighborhood, the idea is this standard would also cover that as well. Let's say X amount of people should be spoken to, and we just want to get as specific as we can to the metric, but it would apply to community benefits or really any other infrastructure and programs.
Because just as a follow-up, we, I'm getting emails, I think most of my colleagues are now, there's a community benefit group that they meet, and I'm getting emails forward anticipating of June 1. Allowing the community to have a stronger voice with your metrics as well as giving us feedback, I think it'll go a long way of bridging the community together and say, how do we develop Charlotte collectively? Because right now, we have this tension, developers, community, and somehow we got to bring them together. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Can I answer?
Oh, oh, sure.
Just feel like there's a member on our commission that is part of the Community Benefits Coalition.
Okay, great.
So there is communication between?
Yes, ma'am.
Fantastic.
Madam Chair, did you have anything before I asked the question?
No, I don't have anything else to add. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great presentation. Thank you for the work that you all are doing. So when I look at that same breakdown of the IAP2 Spectrum of Public Participation, I want to make sure that as we move forward, that we're clear and, as you've already mentioned, transparent with our language. Under empower, we have promise to the public, we will implement what you decide, we don't need to update that language to be more reflective of what we're taking into consideration for the simple fact that unfortunately, honestly, a lot of the conversations that we've had in community, which you've sat in on plenty of the meetings, the way the votes come down don't necessarily align with what has been expressed by members of the community. But I really, really love the conversation and the thought process of council and community knowing when there's opposition and having that information readily available because I don't think that, as you all mentioned, a lot of people in the community, until it hits at their front doorstep, they don't understand all the moving parts. So I definitely support the idea of adding this to the CLT Plus app. We got to do a better job on our end, of which staff is already having the conversations of how to promote the CLT Plus app even more for people to utilize it. Because every time we go out and we ask somebody if they've heard of it, we have more people in the room who have not heard of it than half. As well as Councilman Mitchell, I think what I also heard was, and Madam Chair, the fact that we need a social media expert for that community engagement team, and that may be something that can be partnered in multiple groups because we also need the same thing as CBI and a couple of other departments where we don't have the social media presence on Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, whatever. Every place that the city has a logo and social media, we should have someone presenting this information because more often than not, we all receive a call or meet someone out in the community and say, well, how do I get more engaged? And we think we have all these ways for people to get engaged, but in actuality, there's some type of void between what we are putting out and what the community is able to receive. Also, the question that I have is, did you utilize council goals when you were identifying how these five buckets were being utilized because, or being identified with inform, consult, involve, collaborate, and empower? Because I think that will help with reminding the community as well for city council versus county commission versus school board, here are city council goals. So in these goals, here is where these five buckets fall. Was that part of the conversation that you, that the group was able to have?
Um, yeah, I think we did discuss it at some point and, and just, I guess, even addressing the first point. So we should probably edit this chart to ignore the bottom half where you were saying, council member, the, we will implement what you decide. So in our actual recommendation, we only want to utilize the public participation goal. And so just look at the top half of this part.
Okay. But I do like the idea of the promise to the public because we've made promises, and it will be helpful if you, the community, can help keep us accountable to the promises that we made.
And it's also good feedback for council because of the majority of kind of community engagement goals that come before you, if 90% are only to inform, then you can have questions where this project, you should, the city staff should probably consult the community and not only inform. And so it's just laying out metrics that you can essentially follow, and it'd be better to judge that way.
Well, great job on what the committee has done, so please send our thank yous back to when you have your next meeting, but this was a really great presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Mayor Protem Winston has a question, comment?
Yeah, just a comment, I appreciate. I appreciate the work and the feedback, and it makes a lot of sense, you know. One thing I would, I guess, you know, suggest we do as an organization, to the points that were made, realize where our strong and weak points are. City staff, the city of Charlotte, you know, all due respect, we're good at what we do, right? We're good at what we're brought in to do, to make budgets, run water systems, you know, and ensure public safety. We're not always the best at communicating outwardly and across demographics. So when we're thinking about sharing social media, I think Ms. Mayfield, you know, was mentioning this just a second ago, maybe not focus on how do we increase our social media, our own social media footprint, but how do we work with our partners, right? How do we work with our partners in media, for instance, who already have a larger footprint to provide, we have so much information, they're good at delivering information to the people that watch them. So how do we maybe improve those inflows and outflows in a managed, in a managed fashion? Also, I think it was also mentioned, you know, around schools, you know, again, we're not great at necessarily teaching people, you know, how to learn these very complicated processes. So do we have opportunities to work with our partners in education, for instance, to make this actually available for all types of residents? Because all types of residents should have input in the growth and development and understanding how they can interact with the growth and development of the city. So if we're not reaching kids in pre-K through 12 and therefore their families, or we're not, you know, able to reach college students, community college students, maybe we're missing an opportunity, you know what I'm saying, to outreach. And I don't just mean putting posters on the wall of halls, I mean actually figuring out a way to either gamify or create curriculum that teaches people how to be part of these processes. So let's look to our partners, I guess, you know, to really increase those communication opportunities. We don't want to kind of reinvent the wheel internally, we want to focus on writing growth plans and stuff like that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winston. I see Ms. Anderson has raised her hand. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be, I'll be brief. I do agree with the comments of my colleagues. I also really like this framework, and I think it lays out a level of how we can take action through each of these pillars and columns and what that action should look like. However, I don't want this to be, this is a great piece of work that will can guide our actions. I don't want it to sort of sit on a shelf and we never really revisit this again. I feel like this should be something that we always revisit to ensure that we're holding up our promise to the community and to the public. The other piece I'd like to just speak on is the social media piece. You know, we have a very good group, communication group within the city of Charlotte, and I think social media should be an area of focus here, but also thinking about how social media is used and how, and the ways in which we would disseminate this information. Many constituents only receive news through social media. They don't watch television, they don't listen to the radio, and so thinking about how we could tap in and have the right message for that subset of our constituents that really highly engage with social media and with platforms. You know, LinkedIn is very different than Twitter versus Instagram, so thinking about what's the best platform to disseminate the right message for the right target audience of our constituents. So great work on this from the committee. I hope that you will take it a step further and think about how we can structure a social media plan of action, if you will, based on the right channel. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I also had to recognize Carolyn and even Caleb, they both help us disseminate information through their other roles. I know Carolyn is a neighborhood leader for East Weshafield, and Caleb is a BPC president, so they help us with the public participation goals. I certainly appreciate the work that you both do in other capacities. But I look forward to presenting that along with our committee members to full council at tonight's strategy session and gather their feedback on how can we go about implementing this public participation toolbox. If it's next, any other questions, comments before we adjourn? I think that's all we have. Mr. Barkman, did I miss anything?
No, that's right.
All right, nothing else? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Log off, please.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
When you says okay for me to get started.
We're ready.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, April 3 meeting of the Jobs and Economic Development Council Committee. My name is Malcolm Graham. I serve as Chairman of the Committee. Let's take this opportunity to welcome each and every one of you to our committee meeting today as we kick off the month of April. To make sure that we know who's in the room, let's take the opportunity to start with the back wall and introduce everyone, and then we'll start at the table next.
Reese Kula, Chair of the Business of Health Committee. Chris Smith, City Attorney, Charlotte. Monica Holmes, Director of Governmental Analysis. Carolyn Miller, Vice Chair of Charlotte. Todd.
I call it Kanai. Got that from Tony Robbins. Constant, never-ending improvement. It's our goal to take this program to the next level. We've gone down a long road relative to the disparity study, and we're now at the point where we've outlined what the actual policy and procedures look like at any point. If anyone has any questions, feel free to ask, or you can reserve them to the end. The objectives of this presentation is to discuss the philosophy for the CBI program, outline the CBI policy and manual, highlight the new self-performance opportunity, prioritize the MBE goals and WBE goals going forward, and provide next steps to council committee. New philosophy for the program. The current CBI policy only focuses on subcontracting opportunities for MWSBEs. In the revised policy, there's a strategy shift which aligns with the new focus on helping more MWSBES subcontractors grow into prime contractors. The revised policy will focus on contract opportunities regardless of dollar amount. Now, relative to the CBI policy and CBI manual, the current policy includes policy and operational components. Policies typically do not contain administrative procedures, and so what we are looking to do is to bifurcate the two, the policy and procedures, make it more digestible, easy to[360.12]
When you says, "Okay," for me to get started.
We're ready.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, April 3 meeting of the Jobs and Economic Development Council Committee. My name is Malcolm Graham. I serve as Chairman of the Committee. Let's take this opportunity to welcome each and every one of you to our committee meeting today as we kick off the month of April to make sure that we know who's in the room. Let's take the opportunity to start with the back wall and introduce everyone, and then we'll start at the table next.
Reese Kula, Chair of the Business of House Committee. Chris Smith, City of Charlotte, I'm from Charlotte. Martha Holmes, Director of the City of Charlotte. Carol Miller, Vice Chair of Charlotte, each organization.
Todd.
Cam Young, Economic Development. Holly Esgridge, Economic Development. Gorden, Economic Development.
Anish Loy, City Attorney's Office.
James Carter, Economic Development.
Braxton Winston, Mayor Pro Tem.
Ed Driggs, Committee Member.
Again, Malcolm Graham, Chairman.
Tracy Dodson, Assistant City Manager.
Thomas Powers, City Attorney's Office, Counsel to the CBI Program.
Stephen Coker, Business Inclusion Officer, CBI.
Renee Askew, Assistant City Manager.
Luanne Mayfield, City Council Member at Large.
And we will introduce those who are joining us virtually. If you can introduce yourselves for us.
Hello, this is Marjorie Molina, District 5, and Committee Member.
That's it? All right. Well, we have a somewhat short agenda, but very important agenda, and I will turn it over to the Economic Development Director to preview the agenda, and then we'll get right into the meeting.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Graham. CBI, and we'll let Mr. Coker take that with Mr. Powers, and then I will be back around to talk to you all about the Sullenberger Aviation Museum, as well as current boards and commissions, which was a referral to committees.
Thank you, Ms. Dodson. Good afternoon, Council Committee Leadership, Council Members and Staff, as well as any guests that might be here. I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to give you an update on where we are with this policy slash procedures. And in the spirit of, I call it "can I," got that from Tony Robbins, "constant, never-ending improvement," it's our goal to take this program to the next level. We've gone down a long road relative to the disparity study, and we're now at the point where we've outlined what the actual policy and procedures look like at any point. If anyone has any questions, feel free to ask, or you can reserve them to the end. The objectives of this presentation is to discuss the philosophy for the CBI program, outline the CBI policy and manual, highlight the new self-performance opportunity, prioritize the MBE goals and WBE goals going forward, and provide next steps to Council Committee. New philosophy for the program. The current CBI policy only focuses on subcontracting opportunities for MWSBEs. In the revised policy, there's a strategy shift which aligns with the new focus on helping more MWSBES subcontractors grow into prime contractors. The revised policy will focus on contract opportunities regardless of dollar amount. Now, relative to the CBI policy and CBI manual, the current policy includes policy and operational components. Policies typically do not contain administrative procedures, and so what we are looking to do is to bifurcate the two, the policy and procedures, make it more digestible, easy to understand. Our current document is 50 pages packed with all the information, small print. When this is finally completed, we want to have two separate documents. We're going to dress it up with some graphics. We're going to make it nice, colorful, but most important is the content that's contained in these two separate documents. The revised policy will address policy and will be adopted by City Council. The revised CBI manual will address operational components and signed by the manager. And the ideal here, again, is to make it simple. When we talk about the manager signing off on this, we want to move those simple items that doesn't have the components of policy, but the procedures would be signed off by the manager when they're new, things that come up. And it's something new coming up all the time. Just most recently, give you an example, we had a meeting with a subcontractor, had a major issue on a project, and it was something that came to us so late, about almost two years after the problem happened, that we really didn't know how to handle it at that point. We just could only let them know what legally we could do for them. There wasn't much we could do for this subcontractor. So what we want to add is something like a hotline or email address for a subcontractor that has an issue, and be able to give them an opportunity to share it with us so that we can deal with that right at the point in time it happens. And these are the kind of things that we don't want to bog down City Council with. It's something that we could internally address within the staff. The revised policy overview, it actually is just 10 pages at this point. It defines the scope of the CBI policy. It outlines the CBI program roles and responsibilities of the City Manager, the Department Heads, the Business Inclusion Officer, and the City Attorney's Office. And it also references the actual administrative procedure manual. It also outlines the city's enabling legislation and a process for adopting the 2022 disparity study. The manual, on the other hand, is 34 pages in length. It provides operational procedures and allows, again, for faster and consistent response times to stakeholders and emerging trends, and it requires staff to operate within the authority granted by the City Council through the CBI policy. If additional authority is needed, then the staff will seek City Council permission beforehand, and also would be signed by the City Manager as a citywide policy. Self-performance opportunity. In the previous CBI policy, this didn't allow for MWSBES to count for any self-performance toward a contract goal. It also required all prime contractors to seek MWSBES for sub, as subcontractors, and it inhibited opportunities for our diverse firms to become prime contractors. In the revised...
Could you just explain self-performance?
Self-performance is a situation where if we have a MBE or MWBE performing work on a contract, in the new revised policy, we would allow the goals to be captured in their work, with their workforce, as opposed to reaching the goals by subcontracting opportunities. Currently, that's not allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. In the revised policy and CBI manual, this will allow for MWSBES to use their own workforces towards that contracting goal. It creates opportunities for MWSBES to be prime contractors, and it will be offered on solicitations in the new fiscal year or after July 1. Next up, allow Thomas to speak on CBI goals going forward.
With the new CBI policy, one of the things that I wanted to make sure that the Committee is aware of, as well as the Council, is the actual enabling legislation, why we're prioritizing MWBEs as well as WBE goals going forward. As you are fully aware, our program has a minority business component, as well as woman-owned business component, and small businesses as well. With the new disparity study, one of the things we're doing is aligning what I wanted to emphasize to you today is that the General Assembly created the statute of 143-128.2, which emphasized, again, minority participation and outlined, again, that this is a statewide standard for minorities, as well as women-owned businesses on state contracts. If you can go to the next slide. This aligns in particular for our actual special legislation for Small Business Enterprise program. We've had this legislation since 2002. We've updated it, I think, in 2008 to ensure that it's outside the consolidated market for Charlotte. But one of the sections that I've highlighted before you today emphasized that our Small Business Enterprise program is intended to supplement but not replace the requirements set forth by state statute, which, again, specifies MWBE participation. For that reason, we believe that with the new disparity study and actually our emphasis on minority-owned businesses, as well as women-owned businesses, we're going to have a focus on those goals going forward and not have a combination of MSBEs or WSBs. It will be a MBE goal or a WBE goal. For those situations where there is no minority businesses available, we will then have a S goal, but again, it will be no minority businesses or no women-owned businesses. At that opportunity, we would then have an S goal as a possibility. If you can go to the next slide.
You want to handle this, or you want me?
Go ahead. You're talking about...
So, just to make sure we clarify again, as we're talking about MBE goals, one of the things that I want to make sure that this Council is fully aware of is the process that we're going about legally to set MWBE goals. Again, as I stated before, legally, we're going to move in that direction because it aligns with the state authority in that regard, as well as our own special legislation. We're not eliminating the SBE program. It is only once we have no Ms. or Ws available. So then, the core question becomes, well, what qualifies as an MBE goal or a WBE goal? So at the bottom, I wanted to make sure that everyone's fully aware of how we're developing this as we're actually setting goals going forward. When we're setting Ms. or Ws, we're looking at a particular scope of work, and there must be at least three firms in that scope of work for competition. If it's one firm, we will not be able to set a goal. So we are still promoting the aspect of actual private sector competition for a prime contractor with our subcontractors in order to set a goal. Again, let me just also allude to, Steve's also talked about the aspect of self-performance. That is a separate aspect. But in the instance where we're setting a goal with the thought a prime contractor's going to get Ms. or Ws, we're always requiring a minimum of three firms in that particular category. As such, it has to be in the same scope, not just three minority firms or three women-owned firms. It has to be in the same scope. As such, I gave the example of three MBE architects would allow for a goal to be set because there's three within that category, as well as three WBE security firms would allow for a WBE category. However, if there is one MBE, one WBE landscaper, hauler, supplier, that is not enough for competition for us to set a goal. At that point, if that was the only type of scope that was available for this contract, we would not set a goal because there's not enough competition to ensure that we're, again, promoting not only businesses, but also the opportunity for our prime contractors to legally get someone to actually meet your requirements. Again, as I've emphasized beforehand, the intent of the program is to remedy disparity. It is not a situation where we're just handing out contracts, per se, to individuals just because. So we have to make sure legally we're having that competition and that element in each scope. This would allow for us to move forward, but I do want to make sure at least I explain that process to you in regards to us moving forward.
So is it fair to say that we're narrowly tailoring the goals based on the availability of firms in that particular category?
Yes, sir.
So it's not a blanket MWBE goal, but it's where the disparity exists?
That is correct, yes, sir. So again, once we have three or more, again, three is the minimal threshold. Once we add that three or more, you can set a goal for that particular category. Steve can talk about the overall process. If there are other scopes that have three or more as well, that goes into the overall matrix for determining the goal, but we definitely at a bare minimum must have three minority businesses or three WBEs in a particular category in order to move forward with that goal.
Okay. Just want to say for the record that the room got just a little bit smarter. Councilmember Ashmere has joined us. Welcome back. Dempsey, Councilmember Wallington has joined us, and Councilmember Molina has joined us. So we're a little bit smarter now. Continue.
Where we are right now, I'd like to say we're 90% there. Next steps would include a council committee vote on these staff recommendations, and then, if the majority of City Council approves, then it will be placed on the City, or Council Committee approval, would take it up to the full City Council agenda for April 10 for public hearing on the new policy. And then, after that, if the majority approves the adoption of the new CBI policy, then the CBI policy and procedures will become effective on July 1 or the new fiscal year. And even before that, there would be a bunch of training for our internal stakeholders, as well as our external stakeholders. So I would say easily 90% at this point. Any questions?
Okay, I will open the floor up for questions. Councilmember Driggs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I won't repeat everything I've said in the past about this. I appreciate what you're doing now in the sense of increasing, I guess, the focus on certain beneficiary businesses, and I think that's particularly appropriate because the data we saw concerned me somewhat in that it didn't look like minority-owned businesses were actually claiming a big share of the total contracting that was being done pursuant to the program. And given the intent of the program, that seemed to me like we weren't completely on target. So that's good. It's also good that we are streamlining the policy and the manual distinction and giving ourselves collectively more latitude to make administrative changes without having it become like a, you know, constitutional question each time. I guess one question I do have, Mr. Powers, we've gone back and forth a little bit on these legalities and stuff, so as we kind of heighten the focus on a certain group of businesses, does the legal situation change at all? Are we still as confident as we were before about our ability to respond in case somebody challenges this program? And I know that we did the disparity study through the same lens, as it were. We had the SBEs separated, but could an SBE, for example, say, "Hey, we're now worse off than we were before," and take that as an opportunity to challenge the program?
So I'm hearing about three questions, so let me take them in order. Can any firm actually challenge this actual program? The answer is yes. I will allude to the fact, we were challenged previously with the City of Charlotte, as I understand, sometime early 2000, 2002 range. We were challenged by a minority business for actually not having an accurate disparity study at that time. So there's nothing that prevents anyone from challenging us. So let me just answer that question. To the second question of defensibility, I will reiterate my legal opinion that Patrick also has concurred with as well, is that this program is legally defensible. I do believe that right now focusing on what we're allowed by law to do, which is, again, promote Ms. and Ws to the extent that they are available, I think is legally consistent. However, you're also alluding to another issue, which I am keeping track of, which is the fair cases, which is one against UNC and one against Harvard, which is, I think, now pending before the U.S. Supreme Court. Those cases, while not dealing with contracting, are actually dealing with the issue of race in college admissions, depending on how the U.S. Supreme Court were to rule in those cases, could have a dramatic impact on the use of race in contracting as well. But at this time, there has not been a judicial case that has come out, or any other information has given me the opinion that we are not operating legally in regards to our program as of today. Again, I will say that I reserve the right, as well as Patrick, that if something were to change, we would brief Council immediately, but as of today, I think I will reiterate the previous opinion. We're legally sound.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, I'm on board with the goals of the program, so, you know, this is not a hostile statement. I just have a level of technical discomfort with the spirit of the law and how we're accomplishing these things. I'll just say that. And the other point I made before is, there is a cost associated with contracting this way, as opposed to unrestricted, lowest bidder contracting, and I would be more comfortable if I thought we had a handle on how much we invest toward these goals and what the measurable benefits are. Can we identify how the minority business community is profiting from this and what we're paying in contracting? Because the numbers are large, there are hundreds of millions, right, that are subject to this kind of scrutiny, and I just think it would make sense, like any other priority that we have, for us to have an awareness of, this is what it could have cost, this is what we did pay instead, and here are the advantages, the benefits, that we're deriving from it. So on that basis, I don't know if I can vote for it, but I'm fully confident that it will have all the votes it needs.
Well, to that last point, Mr. Driggs, and I know you brought it up before, we have a solicitation for a quote right now for economic impact study to address that question as well as others, because quite frankly, it's going to help us understand on a number of levels our ROI on this program. We've put this out on the street. We're probably going to, I think the deadline for those quotes to come back is some point next week. At that point, we'll select a firm to do this study. I understand it'll take about four months. Might be able to bring it in with our annual report, but that has been at top of mind, and we're currently addressing it.
I appreciate that. Look forward to the results, and I think that will also help you to target better, right, how we implement this program. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Wallington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a number of questions. I'm sure that the answers are somewhere in this administrative manual, so my questions are in the spirit of connecting the dots for the broader conversation, right? So the first one, just in follow-up to some of the previous conversations we've had as it relates to bonding and how that has been an historical barrier to participation. Can you speak to the status of our work and our assistance in helping MBEs and WBEs?
Well, I'll answer that really broadly, and then I come to you in probably two weeks to go into the details of where we are in the way of an update, but we're in a good place right now. We are working with this selected contractor, I'll call them, in terms of outlining all the elements of that, the milestones, how the payments will be made, and then how we will develop the program for release sometime after the new fiscal year. But we're in a really good place with it. We are working out our budget to make sure that we have a year or two, so we have the funding for year one, and it's really going to be a tremendous program, I believe. It's going to be racing, gender neutral, so we lead as an SBE program, so all of those firms who are SBEs will be eligible to participate. And the ideal scene is, number one, for firms to receive new bonding, those who have bonding already, increase bonding, and of course, be able to grow all of their capacity to participate on some of the larger projects.
Thank you for that. To that point, can you talk a little bit more about what we're doing to open up some of those bigger cost opportunities, like in the way of CMARS and design build-type items? I know that you mentioned here in the overview that our goal is to grow our MBEs and our SBEs and our WBEs from sub opportunities to prime opportunities. So can you just talk a little bit about what else that looks like, or what else we're doing to help folks grow through to some of those larger project goals?
Okay. A lot of what you hear is really... A lot of what you hear is really construction, because our largest amount of spend is with construction firms. However, we're focusing on our other areas of contracting, including our services. Last fall, the manager directed us to create a policy amendment that would allow us to focus on $10,000 to $100,000 range. Over time, and it will take some time, we'll see some impact there. In addition, right now, we have almost 1,500 firms. We're like 1490. We're looking to increase that amount. The more firms we have, the more capacity-type firms we have, the better opportunity we have to contract with them in terms of setting goals and even having prime contracting opportunities. Anything you want to add to any of that?
I would just probably just chime in from, I think, to your core question. And Renee, you may need to jump in on this one as well. If we're using CMARS, design-build, they're going to be probably much larger contracts. You're talking not even $10 million, that's probably at the low end. You're talking very high. I know in the case of Charlotte Water, as counsel for Charlotte Water, we're using design-build for, you know, 30, 40, $50 million contracts, just at a starting point. For CMARS, the airport is typically using those. Again, they're not for a small dollar amount. Where we're using smaller dollar amounts, typically based on, I would say, kind of some practice and procedure, has been design bid build, which is more or less what you know as hard bid. Those have been for those contracts, you know, maybe half a million dollars to maybe 10, maybe 15 million dollars on average. And that, that's because staff has the expertise to be able to do all the necessary, you know, design work, information, and kind of just bid it out, see what the private market is telling us. Whereas the CMARS and the design-build formats, we have a problem, we have a pot of money, but we may not necessarily have a solution. And we're asking you to kind of figure it out for us within the bounds. So I, I think, as Stevens alluded to, in order to get to that point of having those businesses compete, you got to get them to the point where they're getting bonded beyond the half a million dollar mark consistently. So we're moving the food chain from half a million to a million to 10 million to the point where they can actually start jumping out there to larger projects to create more of a competitive market. So I'm gonna pause here and turn to Renee if I'm saying anything wrong. Okay. All right.
Thank you for that. I've got just a couple more.
Couple more.
Just a couple more. I would like to understand, I want to circle back. I heard you say the ROI, and I'm glad that we're framing the conversation in that way, because at the end of the day, this is about how are we increasing business and how capacity and jobs in the community. Can you talk about where our impact analysis, our economic impact analysis is, what the status of that is, and will we be receiving that on an annual basis? Or what does that work look like?
Well, when I, I learned about the ideal of, you know, doing this kind of study. It was at a conference, and we thought, wow, that would be, you know, great if we could get that kind of information. Councilmember Driggs asked his question, and it, you know, made us realize, this is, you know, something that's needed here and now. And so talked to leadership. Leadership said, we have, you know, a bucket of money that we could perhaps pay for this study, find out more details, which we did. We've talked about the ideal of this being something annual, and if we don't have the funding, we certainly wouldn't do this one time. And then that we'd live off of this information. That would be either one or two years or, you know, however our budget allows us to support that kind of information. But the experts that I've talked to, they are, this is what they do. They give you the direct impact, the indirect induced number. And so all of this is something you're going to see, and either it's going to answer your questions, or it's gonna, we're gonna have more questions. At which point, then we know the next step, when we do this again, we got to add that into our scope of work, what we're looking for.
Absolutely. Because I think there's the internal metrics as it relates, you said about 1,500 businesses have signed up in this program as a result of City Manager's Memo. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's right.
Very interested in those metrics and the utilization of that. Where is that program at currently? I know it's been a number of months, there's been a lot of training. I'd love to see the utilization. And then as an out, put our outcome metric, exactly what you said, what is our, what is our economic impact? So I'm definitely looking forward to see that information. And then finally.
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 I don't expect any state left.
There's a lot here, there's a lot here. Exciting times. When we think about this program, we know that a ton of work has been done on it over the years. And in a lot of ways, this is benchmark across our state, right? We talk about Charlotte as a region. What are we doing to regionalize this program? I know that there are other municipalities, other counties that are very interested in leveraging this program and are willing to pay in to do so. What are we doing to, to help that along its way? Does that make sense?
So the reason I was leaning over to tell Steve I will handle this is unfortunately I have to be the big bad in this instance.
Always.
Legally, it would not be beneficial for us to leverage it, only because, as I've said before, disparity studies are a basis for that entity to be able to go in and remedy the actual gap between those minority businesses and women-owned businesses. I would use a hypothetical example, again, I cannot confirm this. If CMS wanted to jump in with us and try to partner in that regard, Steve can work with them on services, the CPCC aspect. He could possibly work on some of the companies that they're doing, you know, with CMS, if they're also in our group for a bonding program. But we could not actually partner with CMS on creating goals and other opportunities in that regard unless they were part of our disparity study. Most disparity study consultants will tell you they do not like to do two entities at once only because there's too much chaos. I think when we did a disparity study, if I remember correctly, maybe sometime in an update around like 2007, 2008, we tried to do a joint one with us, the county, and the school system. And it definitely went haywire, where everybody was like, thank you so much, and went their separate ways. So I, I would just say from a legal standpoint, if we're trying to remedy disparity, it's only going to be us. However, I think Steve has other mechanisms, which are services that are race-neutral, gender-neutral, that we can partner with other agencies and entities to address those aspects. It may be training, it may be actually other development, we can do that, but goal-setting is going to be only for us.
Sure. So I'm glad you made the distinction. I'm not necessarily talking about the goals, I'm talking about the infrastructure piece.
And that's whatever said to him then.
Okay.
And that's something that, and we've talked about it, we will entertain, but we have to, let's take the bonding program. We have to get through year one, understand all the finer components of it, and we're knocking on wood, we believe it's going to be a successful program. Naturally, it's the first of its kind in the state, and so I've gotten at least five phone calls and/or emails, you know, saying I want in. And so we'll cross that bridge, I, I think, to mitigate the expense, it makes sense. However, you know, the first person I go to is him and say, can we do this?
Awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Moreno? Okay? Councilmember Ashmere, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some of my questions were addressed by Ms. Watlington, so it looks like she read my mind, so thank you.
Thank you. She addressed some of my questions too, so I think we're all good. So Mayor Protem?
I just want to give CBI props. They've been very thorough. Counsel was pretty adamant and made a lot of requests a couple of months ago. They have a small staff, but they've been very on it as it relates to reaching out to council members, keeping updates, and obviously doing a lot of work, so just wanted to kind put that up.
Councilmember Mayfield, any parting shots? No?
I'm here for decoration.
Your decoration. Well, I, I too want to echo the Mayor Protem. Since we received a disparity study in December, you made a commitment that you were going to work extremely hard and fast to take out all the policy questions from the disparity study and present it back to council in a way that we can understand it and digest it in a short period of time. And I think we talked about that timeframe. I, I didn't think you could make it, but you're, but you're, you're doing really good work as the Mayor Protem said, with limited capacity for now. I understand your interview and your own field, trying to staff your office, and so I'm really pleased about the direction in which things are going. Members, you see the next step on the, on the screen, which is to have a council committee vote on the staff recommendations today. And if we get a majority, then it will be placed on the council's agenda for April 10th, which is next Monday, for a public hearing on the, the new CBI policy. So do I have a, a motion to accept the staff recommendations to, for this to be placed on the council's agenda for April 10th for a public hearing?
So moved second.
Probably moved in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nothing personal.
No?
Councilwoman Mayfield?
Councilmember Ashmere? Yes?
Mayfield, turn yourself.
Yes, we got three here, so we're all good. So.
I think she's in council.
Yes.
She thinks she's in.
Yes, so Steve, keep your foot on the gas and continue to move this thing forward for us. We really appreciate you, really appreciate your advice as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda item is the aviation museum support, and I turn it over to Ms. Dodson.
Thank you, Councilmember Graham. We felt like this was a good time to bring you an update on the Carolina Aviation Museum, otherwise known as the Carolina Aviation Museum, to talk about where we are going, a little bit of the history of the museum, and where we're going from here, and taking a staff recommendation for, to council for some financial support of the project. Could you go to the next slide? We go to the next slide, please? So as I said, we would look a little bit back at the history and then look ahead at the new opportunities for the museum and why we think this is an important part of our ecosystem. Next slide, please. The Carolina Aviation Museum opened in 1992, adjacent to the Charlotte Douglas Airport, and it was dedicated to showcasing the history of aviation. And you can see from the image, the original Carolina's Aviation Museum, and it hosted about 75,000 visitors annually. Next slide. In 2016, I think the awareness of the Aviation Museum was elevated when it became the home of the Miracle and the Hudson piloted by Captain Sully Sullenberger. A lot of people really took notice to what the museum was at that time. Next slide. In 2019, excuse me, the Aviation Museum suspended operations and began planning for a new facility. A fundraising campaign was launched and to, with the goal to raise 31 million to reopen the museum as the Sullenberger Aviation Museum. Part of what led to that was finding a home within the airport that they could call their own, where they currently had been, the hangar was needed for actual aviation operations. Next slide. So since 2018, we've had ongoing conversations with the museum and various ways that they support our community. They contribute to the cultural amenity and the engine of what Charlotte Douglas is. We think they can generate more than 120,000 visitors annually. We've also had extensive conversations with them about their presence on the West Side and their STEM programs and the ability to make community partnerships and support the surrounding neighborhoods. We feel like the Aviation Museum presence at the airport is really important in keeping and strengthening a pipeline for future jobs around STEM as well as aviation aerospace and the STEM innovation again. And so having them in a home where we can really start to emphasize that and make connections into our corridors of opportunity with West Boulevard, Wilkinson, and other parts of, of the city, especially on the West Side, is something that is important while continuing to have that exposure on growing the aviation and aerospace industry within Charlotte. Next slide. This is a couple of slides of what the new Aviation Museum will look like. Next slide. And the fundraising efforts. To date, 29 million has been raised, so we would be the last 2 million in. Notable contributions have been from the state at 10 million, the airport's Cannon Fund, 5 million, Mecklenburg County, 3 million, Honeywell, a million and a half, and then other private donors such as Bank of America, the Dow family, and Rick Elias at $1 million each. Again, the city's proposal is for 2 million from the Hospitality Fund, which allows them to reach their fundraising goals. Next slide. And we would request a council action for this if it gets through the committee today in the discussion today for April 10th in order to keep them on their construction schedule, which would have the Aviation Museum opening in late 2023. This also allows us to continue the path of these discussions around some community training and workforce development and STEM opportunities within our corridors of opportunity. So with that, I will stop for any comments, discussions?
Thank you, Ms. Dodson. The floor is open for questions and comments. Councilmember Driggs.
Which bucket does it come from hospitality?
T1 and T2 in the tourism.
Right. I, I would just say, to me, this is easy. I think the ability to identify Charlotte with the inspiration of that miracle is a great opportunity for us. Pleased to see Mr. Elias among the donors, since he was standing on the wing of the plane in that memorable picture over at Red Ventures. So I'll just say, I'm in support, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for this?
At the appropriate time, we do.
All right.
Councilmember Wallington for a series of questions.
I might let you go, and then away. This time, I only have one.
The floor is yours.
I only have one, and I'm gonna.
Only one, you're shitting.
Of all times, right? My question, I think, is actually what Mr. Driggs asked, but I'm gonna ask it in a more layman's way. We have this whole broader conversation about tourism dollars and what we're going to need in the future. Can you just provide a little color? And I will say this as a precursor, yes, as a district three rep and a former aviation academy graduate, I definitely want to support this. I just want to make sure that for the broader public, we kind of understand how this falls into that larger conversation, just real briefly.
So quickly, you know that we essentially have four funds within our hospitality. We have our convention center bucket, what we call our Tourism 1, Tourism 2, that is kind of are lumped together, and then our NASCAR funding bucket, NASCAR Hall of Fame, excuse me. And so these are very fluid, the availability of funds is very fluid in those. And so if you remember last year, for example, we had the conversation about the Hornets and Spectrum Arena, and that was coming out of the tourism buckets as well. And we thought that would leave us a little bit constrained. While finance does, and budget does a great job every year of like not completely draining us dry, but that left some availability of funds. We performed better over the past year than we anticipated, which created this, this new availability within that fund. And so that's where these would, these would come from. Again, it doesn't take everything out of it, but because the projections were better than expected, or the revenues were better than expected, we have this, we have this availability. And that came in simultaneously, I think, with the ask for the additional, for the additional funds. Thanks. I'm finished.
I'm just.
I'll return my time.
Yeah, yeah. I, I thought you would. Councilmember Moreno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, I'm actually, I'm actually pretty pleased with the list of participants in donations for this. I mean, the state of North Carolina with $10 million, that says a lot. It says a lot to, you know, what this will mean for our region, for our state in general, you know, for the state to come in. I think that says, that kind of puts an exclamation mark on this to say that our state intends to, you know, market this, this possibility as well. So our counterparts on, you know, the county commission have already committed, and this is a no-brainer for me. I'm, I'm prepared and ready to support it.
Cool. Councilmember Ashmere, any questions? Okay, okay. All right. I'm prepared to receive a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been approved and properly second. Uh, it's been proven appropriately second, um, to, uh, forward to the city council an appropriation of 2 million dollars for the Suddenberger Aviation Museum. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Some move?
Great. I actually might have a short meeting.
You might, well, I, I might make it just a little bit longer right here.
Never say that.
So, because I know we have some folks from Eastland, um, uh, Eastside here at the meeting, could you give us a brief overview based on where we stand with Eastland Yard? So.
Yes.
That trip won't be in danger.
Um, yes, so thank you, Councilmember Graham. Um, very quickly, following last month's discussion, um, want to make it really clear to, to everybody on the East Side that we continue to vet the proposals that we have, reissue, um, questions that have come up either from the council discussions or questions that we had as we went through the proposals. Those, um, should be going back out today, uh, to the proposers. I know that there have been other discussions based on, amongst the proposers, based on our last month's discussion as well, um, that might lead to different types of proposals or adjustments to the proposals. And so we will continue, again, um, we've had new people that have reached out about ideas and concepts, um, and we continue to just be open to that, but again, staying in what we said last month, which is the, um, the intent stays the same, right, for what we want to do, and again, continuing to vet, um, the proposals that we have.
Okay.
Really quickly?
Yes.
If I may.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, um, because I got a, a question today, and I want to make sure that we address it. Um, what is our official RFP window for 60 days? Are we at liberty to say that in a way that would, you know, kind of address that part?
So I think the way that we are working is that we would anticipate, from a staff perspective, we wanted to be able to come back in the meeting in May.
Okay.
And have an update discussion. And, you know, if we have a recommendation on a, a path forward, but that 60-day, in my mind, window was for the May ED Committee meeting.
Okay.
And so we'll bring that back next month and give really a status update, and then I think it can be up to the commission. If there's still more questions, we may keep it going. Um, if we pick a path and want to have a path to move, move with, then we can, we can do that.
Okay. And then, um, an additional question with that being said, um, are we creating parameters for the proposals? Like, is that something that we're going to do as a body, or is that something that you guys are going to do as a department?
Can you elaborate when you say parameters?
Meaning, like, that's the kind of questions that I'm getting from Eastsiders. So basically is, are you telling people what you're looking for in the request for proposal?
So.
Let, let me pause. There's not a request for a proposal, right?
It's not a formal RFP.
It's not a formal RFP.
It extended the period during which people consent to us.
Okay.
Yes. So, so what we did and what we can make available, and we will make sure that all of you have it, is that when we received the first proposal, um, back in late December, we then posted, um, in the, um, in the paper, what we needed to see.
Okay.
And I think that it's important to stay consistent with that.
With what that was.
And with what that was.
Okay.
And so we can, we can send that around so that everybody has it, in case you get any, any questions.
Okay.
Um, but that was, in my mind, those are the parameters.
Okay.
Um, I think the one thing that we have not done is, you know, based on last month's discussion, um, come back and say, here is the set amount that we would invest. I think we were really trying to work through the proposals to see if we could get the proposal that was, that was right, rather than from a staff perspective, setting a specific dollar now.
Okay.
Okay. We good? Okay. Last agenda item, um, is Boards and Commissions Review Package, and this is a topic that all the committees took up, um, a month ago. We didn't because we had a, a long meeting last, last month, so we're just getting around to it. Very, very important, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Dotson to elaborate.
Great. Um, so as Councilmember Graham said, this was a referral, and the, the review of Boards and Commissions was discussed and made any recommendations specific to each of the Boards and Commissions, and the continued purpose moving forward for restructuring or disabandonment. Um, based on the reviewing, the annual board survey results provided for current Boards and Commissions, um, are there any committees that, or any of the committee that feel and warrant further discussion as to the current role of the Board, the alignment of city services, or consideration of changes? And so that's really what we're, what we're here to discuss today.
Okay. It's just my comment, and I, I just want to acknowledge again, the Business Advisory Council, they have been very assertive in terms of trying to get before this committee, even before we decided to have this type of discussion about Boards and Commissions. So I, I, I want to flag them as an organization that we want to begin to have a conversation with, um, maybe get a, a presentation from them to us, uh, and find out ways we can align ourselves with them. I think that's one is, we should do. The, the other group that has called me consistently has been the International Cabinet. Uh, and I think at some point they were maybe in, in neighborhood development, I think at some point, which.
Housing.
Which is kind of weird, right?
Yes.
But, um, but, but I think we're going to absorb them, um, to what we're doing, and again, one, two, and they did come to a, a meeting, what, a couple of months ago?
Yep.
Uh, ED Committee meeting. Uh, so I just want to acknowledge their, uh, assertiveness in terms of really wanting to connect with this, um, this committee in a very meaningful way, uh, and, uh, I think we ought to make that happen sooner than later as well. And so, uh, all the other committees are important. Uh, I think Councilmember Wollington at the last, um, committee meeting summary had an outline that made sense for, for all the committees, so I don't want to reproduce, um, the wheel, I think, what she said, um, do you wish to comment on those? It made, made a lot of sense, and so I just open the floor for any discussion, um, in reference to that, um, and so.
Oh, no, I really don't have too much, too much to add.
Something else, you define.
I thought you outlined it well. I think overall, we can each take a look and see as far as the boards under our purview from a, uh, operation standpoint, what makes sense, what's working, what's, um, what could be improved, and where we could go from there, so.
Okay. And, and I really would love to scrub it, without to do it here, but offline with staff, that maybe at least, you know, once a month, every other month, right, there's a, a advisory group that under our germane, kind of gives us a status update, right, or, or annual report, or some type of communication. Uh, and then, and I'm just thinking out loud, right, it, it would be nice if, if we had a, uh, a special meeting where we invite all our collaborative partners with us, where we just have a reception or some type of networking event.
Aye.
Where all our partners who have an affiliation with economic development, we get together and, and have some informal conversations, informal discussions, that where we can kind of knock everybody out at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But also we can pick out where we need to be focusing on based on those conversations. So I just throw that out there as a, um, as an idea, and that we can develop, um, later, and maybe staff can bring us something back, that we can do something maybe this summer towards that end.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I, I just wanted to share that, uh, the Transportation Planning and Development Committee reviewed the, the Boards and Commissions associated with us and discovered that a number of them had been created in partnership with the county or had some sort of statutory role. So there wasn't a whole lot of scope to consider. Uh, I think our takeaway, and then there was one at least that was changed automatically by virtue of the implementation of the UDO. But I think our takeaway was the same thing, which is that we need to offer greater visibility and engagement with us on the part of the people who volunteer. Uh, I, I didn't like the idea in general of abolishing these to the extent that there were people who belonged to them and enjoyed that opportunity to participate in the dealings with the city. So if we kind of tackle this issue of making ourselves a little more available, I think that's the best outcome. I did have a question about the PCAC. So apparently on the website, it says disbanded on it. Has that decision actually been made?
I would have to, um, check on that one for you.
Okay. Uh, I mean, I, I, obviously we were headed in that direction, and I wondered whether the, the, the change to the website maybe was slightly ahead of us, so.
I'll confirm that for you.
Thank you.
And I think it's important, if you look on, on your presentation packet on Slides four and Slides five of, you know, what are the advisory boards, and then Slide five really shows you how, which one falls into city versus city, city county versus other.
Yeah.
Okay. So we've done it in one hour exactly.
Hey!
You're sorry.
Our city clerk, Ms. Kelly, is on the line. She can actually answer Councilmember Driggs' question, so.
Yeah. Let's hear it.
Ms. Kelly?
Where is she?
Let me see.
We can't hear.
I thought she was on. Okay, maybe not.
So now, we square, we're still at an hour. Okay. Are joining the meeting?
Sure.
All right. Meeting adjourned?
All in favor?
Absolutely. Nice job. Yay.